Good evening and thank you for viewing the June 22 meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. If you would like to join, please join us for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak. If you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it's your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. For each item, we will be taking the in-person public comment first, and then we will move to online comments. And as per usual, we won't be going back and forth, so when that time comes, if it's something you'd like to comment on, please make sure that you line up at the podium. So that takes us to ceremonial matters. And today, we have a recognition of former city council member and three-term mayor Jim Test. So tonight, we take a few minutes to recognize a three-term council member and multiple-year mayor Jim Test. Jim served on the Arcata City Council from 1994 to 2006. He was passionate about land use planning and zoning. Running for a third term to finalize the current land use code, he was a champion for pedestrians and bicyclists, a voice for housing and parks, and loved decluttering the city from unnecessary signs. Jim was an incredible leader, a mentor, and a friend for many of us, and a contributor to our community in the highest sense. On behalf of the city of Arcata, we want to publicly acknowledge Jim's service to this community and send our deepest condolences to his family. This recognition will be accepted by Alex Stillman. And after Alex, we will open up the microphone to my colleagues and to people in the community that would like to share their sentiments regarding Jim this evening.
Maybe that's okay. So I do appreciate that instead of closing the meeting in his honor, and I thank you for that. I first met Jim when he was trying to preserve a house that was going to be torn down. So he was really interested in saving the built environment and historic preservation. And he became the editor for the Historical Society's newsletter for a number of years. He's been a contributor, he was a contributor in our community for many years. And he really saved us at Main Street. I was so happy when he agreed to be our treasurer because we didn't have one, and he was able to sort things out and make things work for us. And so it's a loss for many of us in our community who knew him well. And he suffered though, because he was in the Vietnam War, and he suffered from Agent Orange, and that was his demise. So thank you very much for acknowledging him this evening.
Thank you, Alex.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's a real pleasure to be here this evening. My name's Dan Hauser. I've participated with the city of Arcata in a number of roles over the years, but I really appreciate the fact that the council is having this brief tribute to former council member and mayor Jim Test. I had the privilege of working with Jim for a number of decades and counted him as a great friend. Jim was dedicated to Arcata and Humboldt County. He was a good listener. He learned very quickly. And Arcata is certainly a better place, thanks to his being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Are there any other members of the public that are here that would like to speak in honor of Jim Test? Okay, if not, we'll go to our online and see if there's, if there's anyone online that's wanting to speak regarding Jim Test, please raise your hand. Just checking one last time, I don't see anybody online. All right, I'll just say, I had the pleasure of meeting him briefly through Main Street, and as Alex was saying, he did. As we all know, Main Street was struggling to find board members, and she was able to wrangle Jim to come and help out and get our finances straightened. And so I had the pleasure of working with him a little bit on Main Street and getting to know him in that capacity. So I feel honored that I had that small amount of time with him. Is there anyone else on council that would like to say anything?
I'll add something as well. I only met Jim a couple times briefly. I actually sang and enquired with his wife and had the opportunity to sing at their house and meet their goofy little dogs. But when I ran for council, he was so kind to me, and we met out socially distanced in their yard and discussed ideas about Arcata, and he imparted a lot of information on me in a short amount of time. And so it's just, it was so obvious what a pinnacle of our community he was and how supportive he was of young people getting involved in the community. So I really want to thank and remember Jim in that way. So thank you.
We do have one person that has called in. Call-in user, go ahead.
Hi there, it's Connie Stewart calling. So for remembering Jim, I had the honor of serving with him for a few years on the city council when Dan Hauser was manager. And I apologize for not being there in person, but my car broke down today, which is actually apropos, because Jim helped me buy my car. It's my first and only car. He actually had to drive it home because I didn't even have insurance. And I loved him so, and he was, you know, Jim always kept his cool, and Dan will remember when I would scream. He was just such a good, dedicated member of our community, and he will be thoroughly missed. So thank you again for honoring him.
Thank you, Connie. Do we have anyone else? Nobody online. Okay, thank you. So next, we'll move into report by Commissioner Committee, and we do have our annual report from the Forest Management Committee. I believe we have Michael Furnas to give us our report.
Am I on here? It's working, okay. So nice to be meeting in person finally. What a feeling. Yeah, my name is Michael Furnas. I've been on the Forest Management Committee since 2006, which is typical long tenure on this particular committee, and as is typical for local foresters to kind of stick with a piece of land over a long period of time. I'm vice chair currently, and the chair, Dennis Halligan, wasn't able to be here. He's working in Crescent City at the time. So the Forest Management Committee advises the city council and city commissioners of topics relating to forestry, ecology, and wildlife on city-owned forest land. In addition to making recommendations to the city council for potential amendments to the city's forest management plan, the committee members also review the city's timber harvest operations before they are filed with the California Department of Forestry and conduct post-harvest field reviews when operations have been completed. And so what I have for you today is a summary of various projects and activities that have involved the Forest Management Committee during the fiscal year '21 and '22. The committee meets every other month on the second Thursday at 7:00 a.m. or at the call of the chair, and also conducts public field trips and evening meetings and workshops on occasion. Due to the pandemic, the FMC met less frequently during the year. However, we did meet on Zoom, and the committee's input in forest-related activities within the city remained robust, and many goals were accomplished. There was a very big change this year with the retirement of Marc Andre after a long and distinguished career with the city as the environmental services director and the city's forester. And I'd have to say, the city was apprehensive about this, or the committee, rather. The committee was apprehensive about losing Marc. He really knew so much and was just very competent and took very good care of the committee. And I have to say, we are absolutely delighted and relieved at the hiring of Emily Sinkhorn. It's a wildly complex job, and she seems to have it very, very well in hand, and is impeccably prepared for the committee meetings and really helps guide us through the work that we do. And so, very happy about that. And also, a shout-out to Mike McDowell, who's our wonderful field forester and works very hard and rigorously to figure out what's going on out there and what we need to do. So anyway, you should be really proud of your staff here. So in general, the city, with guidance from the Forest Management Committee, manages the Arcata Community Forest for the long-term goals of providing a healthy and late-seral forest ecosystem, which is kind of an old-growth condition, for wildlife and ecological benefits, as well as providing quality-of-life resources such as trails, access to natural areas for the community. Management priorities include watershed restoration, wildlife howtat, recreation, carbon sequestration, and timber harvest revenue. The city of Arcata manages three separate tracts of the Arcata Community Forest and Redwood Park that together comprise 2,449 acres and include the Arcata Forest Track, which is right above Arcata, and that's 614 acres; the Sunny Bray Track in the Sunny Bray area, which is 336 acres; and the Jacoby Creek Track, which is 1,500 acres, as well as the 25-acre Redwood Park. So keep that in mind, there are three separate tracts of the Arcata Community Forest, collectively called the Arcata Community Forest, but the Arcata Tract, the Sunny Bray Tract, and the Jacoby Creek Tract, together and along with Redwood Park, together comprise the Arcata Forest Estate. So timber harvests on the city forest lands are developed to improve the health and ecological functioning of forest lands, as well as provide revenue for continued management of the forest and other priority projects such as land acquisition, both forest land and urban space, roads and trail upgrades, and new recreation opportunities. Approximately a quarter of Arcata's forest land base is situated in reserves that are mostly comprised of riparian areas and sensitive habitats, and we also have some carbon reserve areas that are not strictly off-limits, but a certain baseline of carbon is promised for 100 years on those sites. Planned annual harvests are approximately one-half the annual growth increment, so the forests are actually accruing volume and structural complexity and age over time significantly faster than virtually all the private timberlands in the Western United States. And one thing that's important to recognize is there's primarily second-growth redwood forests. And when you cut redwoods, and this is very unusual, no other conifers in the West do this, they don't die. Every now and then, one out of 15 or one out of 20 of the old-growth don't sprout, but the rest of them just sprout. You cut them, and a few weeks later, they're growing again. And so what that means is that the second-growth that you see out there is actually the original organisms that comprise the old-growth. They're still there. They didn't die. And the underground part of it survived, and now what you see is just another sprout or set of sprouts from those. An important factor is that these were clear-cut, and starting about the 1860s and then for a number of decades after that, the old-growth was removed, most of it, and the trees re-sprouted. And as a result, we have many more stems than you would have in a natural redwood forest, say you would have at Redwood National Park. And because of the sprouts, you have something like between three and eight times as many stems as you would have in a natural forest condition. And so the combination of the redwoods don't die when you cut them, and the fact that most of the timber harvest that we do is simply removing some of those stems, getting back closer to a natural forest condition, it's a pretty benign kind of forestry. So the pine family, which does intermix with the redwoods in many places in the forest, the Douglas fir and the hemlock and the grand fir, they do die when you cut them, but there are a lot more of those than there were in the original forest condition. And so we're really moving that forest to a reference condition that looks something like the old-growth. Looks more like the old-growth, has fewer stems and larger trees. And we also have concluded, this hasn't been published yet, and it's a difficult kind of determination to make, but with fewer stems, you get more heartwood over time and more durable carbon sequestration. And so we think generally thinning forests doesn't increase carbon sequestration. A lot of folks say that it does. The research indicates that, no, if you just leave it alone, the carbon sequestration is generally optimized. That's not so true in redwood, because what you really want is that heartwood, that red stuff that is incredibly resistant to rot and will really rarely last a long time, even if it falls over. And so that heartwood accretion is maximized through the reduction of the number of stems out there, as we get back to the reference condition of the old-growth. This year, the committee celebrated the 30-year tenure of Russ Forsberg on the Forest Management Committee and wished him well in his endeavors. So we salute Russ and his very long service to the Forest Management Committee, all volunteer, of course. And then the council appointed a new member to the Forest Management Committee, Dr. Aaron Kelly, Forest Policy and Administration Professor at Cal Poly Humboldt. And we're also very excited to have Dr. Kelly on the Forest Management Committee. Timber harvest was postponed in the Swainer Tract, that's a particular acquisition tract in the Jacoby Creek Forest, because of reduction in forest activity budget revenue this year. We received $2,500 in local donations for the placement of two commemorative benches within the community forest. After purchase and installation costs, remaining funds support the city's forest fund. There are limited additional opportunities for placement of additional memorial benches in the community forest. However, there may be some opportunities for doing memorial tree plantings to acquire revenue, and there wouldn't be a whole lot of limitations on doing that. We delivered 565 metric tons of forest carbon, as per the Climate Action Reserve, to various buyers. We continue to provide carbon offsets available for purchase by individuals and businesses, and these are what are called compliance-grade credits. They follow the full Climate Action Reserve protocols for documentation of the volume and validation monitoring and all those standards. So they're what we call honest tons. And forest carbon is a very complex subject, and the climate action reserves in California have very rigorous standards for basically renting this carbon for 100 years. And the carbon reserves in the Arcata Community Forest, largely in the Sunny Bray Tract, are at this very high standard of rigor. And so they're honest, what we call honest tons. We provided input to the city's Gateway Area Plan, and one specifically on maintaining the diversity of local large-diameter milling opportunities and support for relocation of existing businesses as part of the rezone of the Beryl District. And one of the few remaining mills is in the Gateway District and is a non-conforming use, so there's concern expressed there. The committee provided expertise for the non-industrial timber management plan, which is called an NTMP amendment, and we did a substantial deviation, is what it's called in the statute, to amend the Swainer parcel and Klein-Laforte parcels into the city's existing NTMP. And this allows a great efficiency in management, considerably lower costs, because you don't have to do a timber harvest plan each time we do some cutting. And most importantly, it provides a long and broad view of forest management that is publicly expressed and on file with the California Department of Forestry. The committee provided input on the open space parks and trails special tax measure, long discussions on this, and for the priorities in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Committee, as well as the Wetlands and Creeks Committee. Forest improvement priorities that were recommended to the city council for the fiscal year '22-'23 for Measure A are the Margaret Lane Trailhead improvements for Arcata Community Forest Sunny Bray Tract, alternative trail to Trail 9 in the Arcata Community Forest between Trail 3 and 3.5, and the Fickle Hill Road Trailhead, as well as forest road and culvert upgrades. You have to keep taking care of road systems. They don't stay in place if you don't take care of them. And the committee developed a five-to-10-year priority list for the Arcata Community Forest and the Forest Management Committee, and the city staff made corresponding maps to complement that priority list. And so we've taken a broad look at what our priorities are going forward, and those are available to you. In the research and monitoring area, the staff continued to monitor for various species of special concern. The city staff completed annual monitoring surveys for the northern spotted owl and barred owls on all the city-owned forest land. And Mr. McDowell spends a great deal of time looking for those owls and documenting where they are and aren't and what they're doing, and it's very, very important for going forward with forest management. The northern spotted owl surveys in particular required a great deal of staff time, and the bulk of the surveys conducted between March and July. Owl survey information is shared annually with applicable adjacent landowners in a cooperative manner to help facilitate ongoing efforts for spotted owl recovery. Annual spotted owl survey information is also provided to the state and federal agencies, as well as to the California Natural Diversity Database. The staff initiated the city's second measurement of carbon plots located in the Sunny Bray Forest Tract. Plots need to be remeasured every 12 years as a validation and to account for additional growth or diminution of stocks. And the remeasuring and modeling of the data is ongoing and will continue into the '22-'23 fiscal year. The Sunny Bray Forest product is maintained through the Climate Action Reserve as an improved forest management project called CAR 575, CAR being Climate Action Reserve. So it's a registered project, and the city maintains two other carbon projects also registered with the Climate Action Reserve in the Jacoby Creek Forest, CAR 694 and CAR 935. And all the forest carbon projects were initially registered in 2012. And as I mentioned, these are compliance-grade carbon offerings. In terms of roads and trails and watershed and vegetation, we have over 18 miles of roads and trails continue to be maintained at a high standard. We have, including myself, three different road nerds on the committee, so nothing really gets away from us in terms of the condition and watershed protection of the roads. The city improved signage within the forest to encourage the use of Avenza maps for navigating the trail system and for promoting safe biking speeds. So if you don't have Avenza trail maps, get that one, because it really is a very nice tool for navigating your way around the community forest. It's location-sensitive, it'll tell you right where you are. And the city staff completed work on the Peanut Butter Trail in the newly-acquired Forsyth Parcel, the Arcata Community Forest Tract, and that's the parcel right above the Redwood Sciences Building and adjacent to the Cal Poly properties. The Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association and the Humboldt High School Composite Mountain Bike Team provided volunteer assistance at frequent trail workdays. City staff also completed safety upgrades to the existing jump trail segment. The committee recommended updates to the design of the lower jump trail, which include new features for mountain bikers and decommissioning of the old alignment and skid trails. So mountain biking and challenging mountain biking is an increasingly popular area of forest use, and we're trying our best to accommodate that and to keep it well-regulated so it doesn't get out of hand in terms of scaring forest visitors or creating safety problems, and especially that mountain bikers aren't creating their own features. They have to check with us, and we have to approve those features before they're put in place, if they're put in place. Several community workdays involving hundreds of volunteer hours help the city remove invasive plants, maintain and improve habitat trails, and assist with litter cleanup. And so going forward, the planned activities for '22-'23, conduct a field trip to visit the planned '20-'22 timber harvest in the Jacoby Creek Forest and other proposed forest harvest areas, and that's planned for next month. Continue to be involved with the non-industrial timber management plan amendments. Continue involvement with the completion of the Arcata Ridge Trail with the crossing of Fickle Hill and other identified trail priorities, such as the Margaret Lane Trailhead ramp, new trail alternative to Trail 9, and completion of the jump trail. We'll coordinate with other city advisory committees on matters of mutual interest, such as the Redwood Park Master Plan and Open Space, Parks and Trails Special Tax Expenditures Oversight, and other issues that are common between the committees. And we continue to strengthen cooperative partnerships with state and federal agencies, Cal Poly Humboldt, U.S. Forest Service Redwood Sciences Lab, and College of the Redwoods to involve students, faculties, and science in additional forest research projects. Work with HSU on long-term upper Jacoby Creek Forest data and sharing and planning for that new tract there. Continue to strengthen working relationships with the Wiat tribe for involvement in forest management planning and cultural use of forest lands. Obtaining approval of long-term northern spotted owl management plans with state agencies including CAL FIRE and California Department Fish and Wildlife Service. And updating the forest carbon inventories for the Barnum and Lucchese Climate Action Reserve projects. And seeking a cost-share funding from the California Forest Improvement Program called CFIP, which we've been successful with before and can provide significant funding if we come up with the match. And continued collaboration with landowners on cooperative land use agreements and road improvements in city forest lands. And so cooperation between landowners can really be very helpful in terms of limiting the amount of roads, total roads that go out there, and providing access that everybody needs for forest management. And then to conclude, basically, I'd like to invite involvement of the city council with the Forest Management Committee and forest management in general. I know you have an awful lot on your plate besides this, but coming up and taking a look at your forest estate, the forest estate that is owned by the people of Arcata, citizens of Arcata, is very gratifying. And there is a saying, "Let us enjoy life, let us be the queen's foresters." So I've always wanted to say that, and I thought with deference to Councilman Brett, we are your foresters, and we are happy to have that role. And I'll take any questions if there are any.
Great, thank you, Michael, for that. Do we have any questions?
I just want to thank you for that very comprehensive and really interesting report. Thank you so much.
Okay, and it's in your packet. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much and to the whole committee for what you do for our community. Yep. And you know, not all committee reports get a round of applause, so you're doing something So we have early oral communications, and this 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes. So we'll go ahead and start with our in-person, non-agenda-related public input first. So if there's anybody here wishing to speak on something not on the agenda, now is the time.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I just want to share that I come to these meetings on a regular basis, and I totally appreciate the equity of my heart of hearing this, giving me these headphones so that I can hear better when people are speaking, both at this microphone and up on the dais and elsewhere. I think the best sound comes from the people calling in, because the acoustics in this room are somewhat challenging. But this equity issue of public access to things like this meeting, I've been traveling around on the public transit system lately, and hearing the forest management report is like wonderful news of this incredible resource. But the closest bus stop to the Redwood Forest in our community is, I think, Bee and 14th. And so that's a healthy hike for people who do not have their own vehicle or can't ride a bike uphill like me or walk too much distance. It would be really interesting to consider, as we review our transit within our community, making making transit much closer to some of these incredible recreation resources in our community. So I just want to thank you for the headphones and have you think about, you know, adding some more bus stops closer to the forest. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Seeing no more in-person public comment, we'll go ahead and move to online. Yeah, so if you want to speak, now is the time to come up. If I don't see you guys lined up, we're going to move on.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. First, I have yet another letter that was sent to the Planning Commission, it's not in the packet, make sure that gets in there. Second, it's been my contention that the city staff for the planning department is vastly understaffed, like compared to other cities, other budgets, we have about half as many people. I think they're overworked, we know that. The last public Planning Commission meeting, Vice Chair Judith Mayer, put forth the idea we might get some funds from the university. They've got their building going in at the Village. The Krasten Mall is $125 million. We should be able to get at least half a percent of that perhaps. Maybe we can make a request because we're doing a lot of planning for them. The, I, alert to the website again, I have it because I can't say much in two minutes. The, things are stalled, in my opinion. Last meeting, Councilmember Matthews asked about the Form-Based Code and about 3D modeling. We've been waiting for the Form-Based Code, it was supposed to have been released along with the draft plan, it was not. We are seven months into this process, we have not seen anything about it. The Planning Commission has asked repetitively. David has said, "I cannot commit at this point to having a Form-Based Code or having any components of it." Last meeting for you, he said that the consultant is, quote, "putting together a presentation on the educational component of what is a Form-Based Code, how do these things work, and what are some good examples." We're about 10 months past that point. Similar 3D modeling, I've got other things too. Thank you very much. And here is a printout that can be distributed of where we are. Thank you, Karen.
Okay, now we'll go to the people calling in online. First online speaker is Jane, go ahead, Jane.
Hi there, thank you Karen for distributing that. I'm going to speak really fast so I can hopefully get through this. Number one, I have a number of suggestions. One, if necessary to ensure most city council and planning commission members can be present at the joint study session, please review vacation plans of members and set the date of the joint session to enable their attendance. Two, please request staff to provide information on when the draft Form-Based Code will be made available for review by city council, planning commission, and the public to help guide policy decisions. The Contractor's Scope of Work scheduled the draft Form-Based Code to be delivered with the Draft Gateway Plan, which was released December 1 without the Form-Based Code. We need to discuss the proposed contents of the Form-Based Code in parallel with the Draft Gateway Plan as originally envisioned by the Contractor's Scope of Work. Please request staff to address this issue at this or your next city council meeting. Three, please request staff to provide specific data on the grant deadlines, the ability to extend deadlines if extensions have been requested, and the costs of missing deadlines. I had submitted a list of questions more specifically on June 9, which you'll have, I believe. It wasn't included in the June 9 meeting packet. Specific details on decisions required of council to comply with the housing element requirement should also be presented, including penalties if any. Please ask staff to provide this information on the next city council agenda or be prepared to discuss it during the joint study session. These grant deadlines are being used as a rationale for rushing delivery, rushing the Gateway Plan discussion and decision-making process. Four, I've observed that staff is not putting items on the next agenda when requested by the Planning Commission. When the Planning Commission requests staff to put items on the next agenda, they should be placed on that agenda along with written public comment in the packet. Similarly, Planning Commission-recommended changes to the Draft Gateway Plan should be incorporated and presented in an updated draft on an ongoing basis so the Planning Commission can review them. Please direct staff to do so.
Jane, I'm really sorry to interrupt, but it's been two minutes, but if you want to continue at the end, we do have another three-minute time period, so if you want to continue your public input, you're totally welcome to jump in then. Sorry about that.
See if I can survive that long. You're going to be a while. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, our next public comment is from Lulu. Go ahead, Lulu.
Great, thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
We can.
Awesome. My name's Lulu Michelson, and I am a renter in Arcata and someone who has spent the last decade working in local housing policy and on social justice issues related to housing and community development, and I just wanted to express my general enthusiastic support for the Gateway Plan. I think that this piece of planning is a really thoughtful approach to how we manage growth moving forward. I think, as many of you know, we're seeing housing as a core issue for so many populations in our community. We're seeing a rise in street homelessness and student homelessness. We're seeing seniors in our community facing increasing housing insecurity. Renters like me, who are making good money in our early professional lives, can't imagine a future where we could buy a home in Arcata even with a good salary. And so I think we see, you know, a kind of fork in the road here, and I really encourage, you know, kind of thoughtful, swift movement towards the passage of the Gateway Plan so that we can see, you know, an invitation to strategic growth in an area that has walkability, that has access to good resources in our community. You know, I hope that one day I have the option of considering renting or even potentially owning a home in the Gateway District. And so I just want to say that the urgency is real, there's so many of us who may not be able to stay in Arcata without this sort of movement towards thoughtful growth, and I think the Gateway Plan is a really strong way forward. It's in line with the city's vision for infill development, and it's eco-friendly and really focuses on equity and building a community where we can all thrive. So I hope that we kind of see movement towards that plan and commend city staff and the community that have all been helping to shape it and make it an even stronger vision for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Lulu.
No further public comment online.
So next we have the consent calendar, and all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. We have A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of May 18, 2022. B, bi-weekly report on general warrants. C, declare a continuation on the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. D, award a construction contract for the countywide accelerated cure slurry project 2022 to Dryco in the amount of $607, $477,028. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $121,495.46, which is 20%, for a total of $728,972.74, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary. And authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. E, award a contract for the 2022 timber harvest, logging and log hauling to Redwood Forest Products in the amount of $247,000 board feet. And for logging, $65.25 MBF for trucking redwood logs to Arcata, Arcata, California, $87 MBF for trucking Douglas fir logs to Corbell, California, and an option of $2,000 to install four temporary road crossings and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. We have F, award a contract for the Arcata Public Safety Radio System upgrade to day wireless systems in the amount of $1,057,716. Authorize the city manager to increase the contract amount up to 5%, which would be $52,886 for contingencies, and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. G, approve the purchase of a body worn camera system in the amount of $108,261, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. H, accept $7,300 in donations for commemorative benches in the Arcata Community Forest. I, adopt resolution number 212-73, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution, compensation and benefits for hourly-rated part-time, temporary, and seasonal personnel to add administrative aid classification. J, approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Arcata and Full Cycle Compost to enable compost operations at the Bayside Park Farm, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. K, adopt resolution number 212-74, approving an application for grant funds from the California Coastal Commission's LCP, Local Assistant Grant Program, for conducting a sea level rise vulnerability assessment and hazard scenario planning for coastal resiliency. L, adopt resolution number 212-70, authorizing application for the Regional Early Action Planning Grant in the amount of $33,000. And M, approve amendment number three to the memorandum of understanding between the city of Arcata and Humboldt Trails Council to add a new section regarding shared use of a flail mower and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. We use quite a few letters in the alphabet on this. So I do know we've got a request by staff to pull item D to update a cost, and is there any other council member that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Yeah, just a few items. Like to pull item E in addition, item F. I'm sorry, also item B. Item I. End up.
Do we have any members of staff or the public that would like to pull any of the remaining items? I see nothing online. Yeah, so you can comment on an item that's been pulled, so is the one that you're wanting to comment on already pulled. Okay, so when we get, we'll take them, I think we take them item by item, Bridget, is that, yeah, and so then we'll do public comment on each one. So, yeah, sure, Jim. Okay, so let's just start going down the list. So item, well, I guess let's go ahead and make a motion to approve items A, C, G, and H, if someone would like to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve items A, C, G, and H on the consent calendar, please.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item B.
My first question is, just looking at the first page, why are there so many different, I feel like I've asked this before, so forgive me if I have, but why are there so many different individual payments to remit? Why isn't there just one big one?
So the way that we remit the payment for insurance carrier, we have different general ledger coding for how the check is coded, so the way that you see this presented, one individual check may have multiple line items for different medical insurance premium payments.
Okay, thanks. Question about check 246485 to Amazon Capital Services.
Yep, and then what page are you on?
Oh, on packet page 23.
Okay, thank you. You said Amazon Capital Services?
Yeah.
Yes. So that item, page 23, Amazon Capital Services, I'm just looking at the description really quickly, that was a purchase for chairs, and because it's coded to 662, I believe it's going to be related to our wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, thanks. Check 246492 on the same page to Frontier Analytical Laboratory.
Sorry, can you repeat the vendor again?
Frontier Analytical Laboratory.
Okay, Frontier Analytical Laboratory, that's going to be 246492. And that is just a open purchase order for lab testing for our wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. And how about, just right below that, it's like Hatch, Hotch Chemical Company?
Yes, that says that is an open purchase order for lab supplies.
Also for the wastewater treatment plant?
Uh, one second, I'm assuming, but I won't check the coding. Sure, yes, that's also for the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. And then next page, check 246508 to Reese and Associates.
Uh, Bruce and Associates, 24658 you said?
508.
508, Reese and Associates, and this is page 24, let's see, 508. It is related to Geological Review Services for Alquest Priolo, is that how you pronounce that?
Okay, thanks.
Evaluation.
Thank you. And on the bottom of the page, there's a bunch of, in the next page, there's a bunch of individual payments to Sun Communities Incorporated?
Yes, so that is related to our tenant-based rental assistance program, and they're one of the vendors that we're paying on behalf of the tenants.
Then, let me see. I think that's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve item B on the consent calendar.
A second.
Okay, do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we've got a motion and a second, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, takes us to item D. And this is the one that was pulled by staff, so.
Yeah, and also, sorry, you had a question, I believe?
I'm just looking at this contingency of 20%, and that seems excessive. Like, how can the estimate be $121,000 off? That seems pretty high.
Contingency is not for the off the cost, it's since this is a partnership project, and the city of Fortuna, city of Riedel, Cal Poly Humboldt, and city are involved, if they want to add some additional slurry on the additional streets, so they could add that, so that's the reason we have that contingency.
So if HSU wants to add additional slurry, we're paying for it?
No, they will be paying for their portion.
Okay, but our portion would be $121,000?
No, it will be proportionally shared among whatever they are using.
But we're still asking for $121,000 of extra money for unseen circumstances?
Yes, but when we make the payment or when we do the actual work, we will know how much work Cal Poly did, or Riedel did, or Fortuna did, or city did, and based on the amount of work, they will be paying their contingency or extra work.
Don't we normally do like 10%?
Let me, maybe I can clarify a little bit. The slurry projects that we do, we, each year they rotate in terms of who is the lead bid. This year, the city of Arcata is, so those payments from those different agencies will all come to us for parts of this work. We also have some slurry work in this. Other years, the county is the lead agency or Fortuna's the lead agency, and they would have the item before their council. So the increased contingency also allows other entities to add work to their scope if we get a good price and they have the money to do it, but we need authorization to make sure we can continue to pay the bill. Is that right?
Yeah. I mean, that all makes sense, it's just 20% seems really excessive. $121,000 off of an estimate seems really high.
Well, we have done that in the past when the, if the project is more than a million dollars, then we ask for 15%. It's a, depending where the cost is.
But this is only $607,000.
Yeah, so that's what we're asking for, since a small amount, there'll be more contingency. As the project goes smaller, we ask for more contingency because there's more variability on the projects.
All right. I mean, I support 10%, but that's how I feel about that. I'm thinking about that.
Okay, thank you. And also, I do want to make some changes to the contract amount. The contract amount that you have in your staff report is based on the base bid presented by the contractor. However, the contract should be awarded based on the bid price, which is the total, which is based on the total of the unit price, which was also presented by the contractor, but we use the total number rather than using the total of the unit prices. The cost difference is only $134, just $134.48, but we just want to be sure we are doing the right thing per the contract document. So we are requesting to make changes to the total bid amount, contingency amount, and the base bid amount. I can give you the numbers so you can read it right, but I will also read for you for those changes, for the recommendation part.
You're going to read it?
Yeah, I'm going to read it too, but when the mayor makes the recommendation, if she wants to read it. So, so the updated recommendation will read like, like this. Award a construction contract for the countywide accelerated cure slurry project to Dry- Award a construction contract for the countywide accelerated cure slurry project to Dryco in the amount of $607,342.80. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $121,468.56, 20% for the total of $728,811.36, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Thank you.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to award a construction contract for the Country Ride Accelerated Core Slurry Project to Dryco in the amount of $607,342.80. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $121,468.56, 20% for a total of $728,811.36, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents.
Second. Okay, do we have any public input on, on Item D?
There's none online.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
So we have three, three ayes and one no. Motion passes. That takes us to number E, or letter E.
Okay, please have a staff report.
Certainly. So this is a staff report for awarding a logging contract bid for the 2022 forest harvest planned in the Arcata Community Forest on the Jacoby Creek Track. You just heard an annual report from Michael Furnas. The committee will be heading on a field trip to this planned forest harvest location. It's on the western part of Jacoby Creek Forest off of Greenwood Heights, the Klein La Forge property. And a couple months ago, we, or sorry, a couple weeks ago, we put out a request for bids for a logging contractor. We received two bids, and these are both contractors that are familiar, working with Arcata Community Forest, Community Forest principals, and we had, you know, deemed them both acceptable bids, and we outlined in the staff report their costs for logging, trucking to the locations of the two Redwood log destinations and Douglas fir log destinations, as well as their bids for installing a temporary road over a couple crossings. And we are outlining a recommendation for the lowest bid for Redwood Forest products, and that amount is outlined in the staff report. You, the council previously awarded the timber sale bids at the first meeting in June. And so our assessment is both from the timber sale, anticipated revenue is higher than our, what we have currently in our proposed 2223 budget, and our logging costs per this bid would be lower than our budget estimates, so we anticipate more of a net increase in forest revenue. We, we have, this is a parcel that is more recent acquisition, that is currently in the process of being amended into our NTMP, our Non-Industrial Timber Management Plan, and we will also be, so that is kind of one contingency that we expect that to be completed so that we have a later season harvest. And so our recommendation is to go to the, with the lowest bidder of Redwood Forest Products and award the logging contract to them at this meeting. Thank you.
Are prices up or down right now?
So, as far as prices for, for timber, for when, our previous decision, that's more what we think about of prices being kind of up or down, and so we felt like we received a, especially for, well, for both Redwood and Douglas fir, a good sale amount, but again, that was the previous council meeting. And so these logging costs were within our anticipated range. I think our budgeted amount for this fiscal year was in between these two bids, and so these kind of came in within that range, if that helps answer your question.
Yeah, so it does say in the range of $105,000, $105,695, but I don't see, like, I don't see another number that makes it a range, I just see one number.
I guess it is written as in a range because they bid on the thousand board feet that they log, and so we outlined in the bid, the amount of timber that we anticipate that they would be cutting and delivering to our two destinations. And so what, what they will build will be dependent upon what ends up being harvested, and so that's why we're using the range, because we anticipate that that will be about 330,000 board feet harvest, but it could be a little less, could be a little more.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve Item E from the consent calendar.
Okay, do we have any public input on Item E?
No online public input.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes, and that takes us to Item F.
May I please have a staff report?
All right, I'm going to ask Danielle Allred to come on and provide a staff report. This was an item that was covered extensively at the budget study session hearing, and we'll give an overview.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So this is a staff report to approve a contract with Day Wireless Systems for a radio infrastructure project that is primarily centered on the police department, but I believe it also impacts all of the city radios. And it would replace all the existing radio infrastructure at our existing locations, including the handheld and in-vehicle devices, with a hybrid system that is both digital and analog compatible, and this will help increase coverage, reliability, and resiliency of these critical communications. We did a request for proposals process in October of 2021, and Day Wireless Systems was the sole respondent, so the city did have multiple meetings with them to discuss the proposal. The initial RFP asked for sort of a coverage assessment that was maybe a bit much to request of vendors for free. So we did, you know, have some discussion with them about what would be the best, result in the best coverage essentially for the city. And the initial proposal did ask for vendors to consider reutilizing some of the city's existing equipment, but after discussion with them, we decided that, or we, they helped us realize why that was maybe not a great idea, as, you know, they could do what they could do to try and incorporate some of our older equipment with the newer equipment that we would be purchasing, but there's no guarantee that Motorola would, sorry, Motorola is the primary manufacturer of a lot of the equipment. And so we do have a source well contract for cooperative agreement that will make that pricing more competitive for us. But it's, you know, there was a chance that Motorola might stop supporting the older equipment, and that there could be glitches in between the communications between those equipments, so we did ultimately decide on a complete replacement of that equipment, which will benefit the warranties periods for all that equipment. The mixed mode style of both analog and digital will make it compatible with other communications outside of Arcata, for those that might be on one or the other. And, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Oh, that's great, thank you very much.
Yeah, we talked about this extensively at our budget setting meeting, so.
I heard Karen say that, thanks.
Yeah, I'm just reiterating. So I'd like to award a contract for the Arcata Public Safety Radio System upgrade to Day Wireless Systems in the amount of $1,507,716. Authorize the city manager to increase the contract amount by up to 5%, $52,866 for contingencies, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
A second.
Okay, do we have any public input on this item?
No online public comment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, that takes us to I.
Yeah, I know a lot of people were, you know, curious why I missed a couple meetings, and I had a very close member of my family pass away, and I was also sick, so I do apologize for missing some meetings. I'm still catching up. Yeah, may I please have a staff report?
Yes, this is an item to add a new classification to your hourly salary schedule. This is a position that used to be active several years ago, and it was specific, at that time had more specific duties, that related to our, what was then our Public Works Department, that was prior to the restructure, that happened in 2014. And also, in that restructure, the position that was being filled by the hourly position was made into a higher-level full-time position. We have started to have more of a need from various departments to have a higher-level admin support that is higher than the office assistant that we currently have on the hourly schedule and our full-time positions. So we have revised this job description to be current for today's uses, and are adding that so that our departments have another choice for our hourly admin support.
So is it all the job descriptions listed in here?
Pardon?
Just one job description?
There is just one job description being added at this request or this action.
And which one is it?
The administrative aid.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If I could please have another bag of tea, I'd be very grateful. Thanks.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt consent calendar, Item I.
A second.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, letter J.
May I please have a staff report?
Certainly, so this is a proposed action before you to approve a no-cost MOU between the city and Full Cycle Compost for use of the city's earth tub compost equipment at the Bayside Park Farm. And here today, we also have representatives from Full Cycle, if you would like to speak with them, but the city is really interested in continuing to partner with our community partners for zero-waste actions and actions on solid waste. We really saw this as an opportunity to restart the use of the earth tubs. The earth tubs were, started to be used in 2019, and full-time and part-time city staff at that time collected food waste and scraps from city facilities, and then worked that into compost at the earth tubs to be used at the Bayside Park Farm. COVID hit, and just a number of priorities shifted, and staffing needs, and so the earth tubs have not been utilized since that time. Full Cycle is a, you know, worker-owned project of Cooperation Humboldt and the Small Business Development Center. They have really shown interest in continuing to be a partner, and we saw this as an opportunity to restart food waste collection from our day camps, summer camps, that are happening at the community center, as well as the Senior Resource Center lunches that are picking back up and more days, and so a lot more food scraps being, being made, as well as offering an opportunity for our Food Works tenants to have a half-off if they would like to participate. And so again, this is no cost, it's the use of the earth tubs, and that will assist the city in working towards our zero-waste goals. We have this MOU proposed to be through the calendar year. As our department has been coming to you for a lot of updates around the organics recycling requirements that are from the state, SB 1383, we will have a lot of planning for food waste organic recycling coming to you and, you know, speaking more in the community in this, especially in this next calendar year. We see this as a great collaboration until we really have all of the kind of regional needs in place for a comprehensive organics recycling. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve Item J from the consent calendar.
A second.
Do we have any members of the public wanting to comment on this?
To see this memorandum of understanding with a community organization like Full Cycle Compost, because we have a lot of resources in our city that are underutilized or not utilized at all, and the ability of a great eager company to make use of a city piece of equipment that hasn't been used, this is just how we need to operate in the future. And as we are getting our act together on a law that's been in existence now for six months about organic food waste, and we're not doing a lot in a grand scale yet to compost that food waste, this is a great pilot-type project, using the equipment that the city owns and has managed, and having a great company that's really interested in doing the better thing for our community in terms of this food waste issue with Full Cycle Compost. So this is a good model for us to look at in a lot of arenas, so thank you for pulling it off the agenda so it could be discussed, and I could stand up here and give a thumbs up for it. Thank you.
We have one online, online comment as well. Go ahead, Jane.
Hi there. I'm very interested in the potential of what could be done to increase compost at that site, above and beyond the use of existing tubs. Could we possibly, I mean, the city has a lot of these black individual home composters that you sell for $25, assuming you still sell them, and I think you do. So I'm just wondering if we could expand the use and the compost, compost ability at this site, above and beyond the tubs that you're currently proposing to start using again. So I'd just like to have an open discussion at some point of how we could expand this possibility, like, we, we eat a lot of bananas and fruit and things like that. We have a lot of organic waste that ends up in the garbage. So can individuals contribute to this process at Bayside? That's it? Can you hear me?
But Full Cycle Compost does offer a drop-off service for only $4 a week for the public, and it makes it very easy for the public to drop off for those who can't afford to have compost picked up at their home.
Thank you. Do we have any other online comments?
No other online comments.
Okay, so I think we have a motion and a second, great, and I just wanted to also express my appreciation for your service and to say that I'm excited for the agreement between the city and your business, so thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item K.
May I please have a staff report?
Yes, so before you, for this staff report, we are coming with the, you know, suggestion to continue our sea level rise assessment and adaptation planning. So this is a resolution before you to submit an application to the California Coastal Commission's Local Coastal Program Local Assistance Grant Program. So this is a grant program that has a max grant amount of $100,000 per grant. We have our city staff between Environmental Services and Community Development Department have worked with our Coastal Commission staff to understand that the city may submit multiple grant applications. grant applications to this funding source. So, before you today is one from Environmental Services that would expand our vulnerability assessment planning on Arcata's shoreline. So, it would be a planning study and would really develop more of a hydraulic model for Arcata's shoreline mainly, you know, between McDaniel Slough and Brainerd Slough. And that is more than, kind of has been done currently in this particular area for sea level rise planning. We are often kind of thinking more in a bathtub model where the seas are rising kind of everywhere at the same time. And this would be looking at more details about how our different landforms affect the way water moves in the hydraulic model and also, you know, really looking at the vulnerabilities amongst the shoreline and also what happens if there's more rainfall, stormwater, you know, events, wave action, how all of that presents vulnerabilities at different points in the shoreline and also then how we can start to plan for adaptation. So, this would be a planning effort that is supported by the council's priority projects and would support future capital improvement planning for the city.
That sounds great. Do you know what this, I know the grand jury requested the city to make a response to sea level rise and could you give me an update on that?
Yes, certainly. And so, city staff, again, between Community Development and Environmental Services have a more of communication that has been starting or kind of already has been amongst the various jurisdictions, particularly ones that were called out in the grand jury report, and we are planning coordination for a coordinated response.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve item K from the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Do we have any public input on item K?
My name's Joanne McGary. I really appreciate some of these being pulled off consent calendar as routine items because they really aren't. And the sea level rise issue is of vital importance to all of us in this area of Humboldt. And I attended a coastal commission meeting a few years ago where Alron Laird gave a report about sea level rise. And I'm sure that the data is even more dire than it was back then, but it was gape-mouthed commissioners after his presentation about this whole issue. So, the fact that we're ongoing with looking at this local coastal plan and trying to get monies to see what's happening is really important. So, I want to just toss in there the concept of retreat from our existing sewage treatment facility, that we really, really need to look at a higher ground opportunity as opposed to throwing a lot of money into existing facilities when sea level will probably be shown to be even increasing at a more rapid rate and impacting our existing facilities. So, doing this work in conjunction with this thought of future thinking and investing in really reliable and effective means of combating sea level rise, especially with things like our sewage treatment. So, thank you for applying for a grant to do this.
Thank you, Joanne. And we have one online comment? I think we have one more. We'll have one more. Go ahead. One more in person, one, and then we'll jump to online.
Thank you. I'm Scott McBane. We have a building on corner 7th and J Street. And I talked with the Environmental Services at the Wetlands and Creeks Committee, but we used to monitor stream, the Jolly Giant Creek in our backyard, and I offered to get that gauge going again. It's right on the edge of that transition on the tidal zone, so like on King Tides. So, I don't know if staff are interested in having us get that going again, but we'd be happy to help and it may be a good baseline data point for assessing future sea level change. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. That's great. Okay, go ahead, Jane.
I want to just second Joanne McGary's suggestions about looking at the implications for our wastewater treatment and the, I know we're in phase one upgrades right now and I think it would be useful to look at phase two, phase three, and how sea level rise could impact those projected phases so that we know with the projected increase in population, what we're likely to need and when we will outgrow our current system and need to move to another, in another location. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. No other public comment? Okay, do we have a motion on this? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Item L.
May I please have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and the public. Tonight before you is Resolution 212-70, which would authorize the application for up to $33,000 through the Regional Urgency Action Planning Grant that the Humboldt County Association of Governments is managing. The application process is relatively straightforward. You were presented a couple of weeks ago by Una Smith, Representative of Humboldt County Association of Governments, and she outlined the granting process. So, we're happy to bring the resolution forward that would actuate this grant application.
I'm looking under discussion and it talks about the grant program provides much assistance and on the fourth sentence it says, or says, "These funds will fund contracts for in-depth racial equity." And I was confused about that sentence.
I believe the word should read "in-depth."
Okay. Because in-depth almost made sense, but I wasn't sure. So, thank you. And then I also noticed under introduction, it says for a grant amount of $33,000 to continue gateway planning efforts. But on the budget fiscal impact, it says $25,000.
Yeah, it's up to, up to $33,000. The HCOG presented that change the day of the staff report was being written, so I didn't catch it in this separate section.
Okay, thank you very much. So, wait, I'm sorry, is it, so is it 33 or is it 25?
It's up to 33.
Okay, got it.
I'll make a motion to approve item L from the consent calendar.
Yeah, we'll just one second. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, let's go ahead and, yeah, let's do public input.
Got a question about it. So, my question was, my understanding before with this REAP grant that potentially said some of that money could be dedicated to possibly community engagement and education on form-based codes. I don't know if that was correct or not, but it seemed like there might have been some room for that and wondering if that's at all a possibility and also with that in mind, like what might be the timeline when that starts to happen and that engagement? And I guess I'd direct it to you, David, because that's your expertise.
All right, so I can have David get back to that with that offline, but we don't typically answer the direct questions from public comment?
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't get that.
Yeah, but we'll definitely have them.
That's my question though, thank you.
Awesome, Jim, and we'll have someone get back to you with that. Thank you.
You know, I need another bag of tea and everyone's decided I'm not allowed into the council office, so I'd really appreciate it if somebody would please give me a bag of tea. I did ask Danette and she hasn't brought one, but I'd be very grateful for that.
Okay, can we do the online comment quick? Well, sure. Let's see. Jane, did you have a comment or was your hand just still up? Go ahead if you do on item L.
I think I needed to lower it, sorry. I don't have a comment. But I do, you know, would be interested in knowing exactly what the plan is for using that money. It would be kind of nice to know.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I'd like to know that too. Would you please answer the question?
I'm sorry, what was the question? What is the money being used for? So, the money that is being proposed to be used for in this grant application would be to fund some racial equity work that we're working to develop a scope of work with the Orem and Blank Consultants who are in process of proposing a plan for how to use that engagement, that special engagement fund. And then in addition, it's, you know, funding additional work that'll come, arise out of the form-based code, you know, the engagement associated with that. So, the form-based code if authorized by the council, and again, this is a, you know, discussion, I think, for city council and planning commission during the study session, you know, to really formalize, you know, that that is the road we're on. But that if we're on that road, then that's going to involve some, some community engagement around, you know, what these buildings will look like, what, what standards we bake into the form-based code. And so, you know, we'll be looking to continue to flesh out our budget on that. If you recall, when I presented a few meetings ago, the sources and uses were about $300,000 shy and we're continuing to try and fill that gap of that $300,000 based on, you know, our current estimates for, you know, for the project.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. And...
Yeah, you know, and I just know there's a lot of people here for another, other agenda items and I just wanted to apologize for taking up so much time. You know, it's what the circumstances, the council, the staff has created for me. This is really my only opportunity to get questions answered. So, you know, I can't even email questions right now. So, it's, you know, it's unfortunate. So, again, I apologize for taking up so much time. May I please have a staff report on item M?
Yes, so before you is an item to approve an amendment to our existing memorandum of understanding with the Humboldt Trails Council. The Humboldt Trails Council is a community volunteer-based organization that supports local trail maintenance and advocacy and development. We have an MOU that the, the first MOU that was developed was really to codify the Trails Council supporting volunteer work on city trails and that has been a tremendous success over the years. And the HTC has documented the number of hours and participants from the volunteer trail stewards and they work from the marsh to the bay trail to the community forest to other of our smaller parks. We next had an amendment to support the joint funding of a volunteer coordinator position. And so, that position is a part-time city staff position and supported both from city funds and from support from the Humboldt Trails Council. And that position really supports the volunteer coordinators coordinating trail volunteer days throughout the county. And this is a third amendment that would add an additional component. And so, over the last, it's been a number of months, the Trails Council reached out to nearly all, a lot of the local jurisdictions about the opportunity to purchase a piece of equipment that would enable more efficient trail maintenance. So, this is a flail kind of arm mower that is a piece of equipment that not all jurisdictions have. And as we're looking to really expand and connect our regional trail system, maintenance again is one of our key things that is difficult to fund. The HTC has fundraised for that flail mower and four jurisdictions, City of Arcata, City of Eureka, the county, and McKinleville Community Services District agreed to work together to have shared use of that piece of equipment and to help fund it. And so, the proposal in the MOU is just around the ownership and shared use of this mower kind of outlines how it will be utilized, also really details that the park supervisors from all these four jurisdictions will work together to plan the schedule and also just ensure good maintenance and care protocols for the piece of equipment. And so, that is our proposed amendment update to the Trails Council MOU.
How does a flail mower differ from a regular mower?
The flail mower has like a bendable kind of arm that is able to get into other places. And if you have more detail, the Trails Council President Michael Proul is here that can provide more details on the mower purchase.
No, that's good. Thank you so much.
I'll make a motion to approve item M from the consent calendar.
I'll second. Okay, and public comment?
Type of piece of equipment and if so, are there or will there be electrified pieces of equipment like that or is, right now, that's our only choice? So, I guess you can't answer that, but I, you know, I'm just kind of concerned as we add equipment in a future-thinking world, yes, definitely, there's a need probably for a piece of equipment that can do the work of many by hand type of thing. So, you know, it's all great, but just constantly not just accepting something just because it is what it is. So, I also would like to just mention again, access and an equity type of way to volunteer opportunities with Trail Council events. And I think I shared with you at one point where I had to climb Diamond Street to get to the trailhead because I had thought there would be either public transit or a shuttle service for the trail, trail work that day, so it was not available to me. And I didn't at the time use a vehicle, my own vehicle, to try and get there because I wanted to get there without using fossil fuel of my own. So, that whole kind of concept of volunteering and equity to access places that right now people can only get to by a car. So, carpooling type of thing that the volunteer coordinator can set up and this and that. So, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Hello, I'm Michael Proul with the Humboldt Trails Council and Emily has done a tremendous job of capsulizing the MOU that we have and the changes that we've made it in over the years. I just wanted to strongly recommend this. We've been working on this for a little bit over a year and it's been a great collaboration between the City of Arcata, City of Eureka, Humboldt County, and then McKinleville Community Services District got it added later on. So, I think it's just going to be a great win-win situation for all four government entities. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online? No online comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, motion passes. Okay, we have old business. So, we have consider initiating amendments to the short-stay vacation rental program and can we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loyah, please?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members, and public. I provided a oral report during staff reports at your last meeting and just brought forward some of the issues that we were learning about, about this, this new program. It's about a year old at this point for short-stay vacation rental permitting. And so, I wanted to bring a more formal staff report before you talk a little bit about the issue, some of the things that we've learned over the last year implementing this program and ask whether you wish us to initiate an amendment. You can certainly provide, if you do choose to initiate an amendment to that, that body of regulation, can certainly provide some input now on, on what areas of focus. Or you may, if you wish, wait until we have a little bit more in-depth outreach with, with operators and folks in the community to, to ensure that we're capturing, you know, all of those, those issues or you can have a blend of those two approaches. So, let me just provide you a little bit of background for some of the issues that we've come up with. Most of these are really just operational. Most of these are really just operational observations that we've made. And, you know, I guess I want to start by saying I'm happy to report that we haven't had a whole lot of complaints about the program. To my knowledge, we've had none and I don't know if that means that... To my knowledge, we've had none, and I don't know if that means that, thank you, everybody is happy with the program, the way that it's operating, or if it just means that people don't know that they can reach out to us and lodge their complaints. But, but we don't have a lot of complaints. And so that brings me to, I guess I'm, I'm jumping around, going a little bit out of order here, but it brings me to bullet number three on packet page 151. Right now, one of the things that the, the operators were concerned about was having to provide their 24-hour contact information, or their, their management company's 24/7 contact information viewable from the street, the public rideaway, so that, you know, they could receive the first complaint instead of, you know, the, the APD. So one item that you may consider is, you know, around this, do we still need to require a sign? If so, you know, what is the, you know, the signage required? You know, some folks have provided input to us, the standards that we've adopted are, you know, significantly more expensive than they would be if we adopted another standard. So certainly want to look into that a little bit and make sure that we're providing, you know, the, the information that we feel like we need to at a reasonable cost to these operators. So that's, that's just one, one item. And again, just because we haven't received complaints yet doesn't mean we won't in the future, you know, about those. Another issue that did come up, and we did receive at least one complaint about this issue, is the, the limitation on the distance between units. So this is bullet number two. And so Kayla, who's primarily tasked with the hub of operating the program for, for our city, and Brian Kang put this map together. I'm going to zoom in because obviously you can't see it, but I just wanted you to see that this is the City of Arcata, and it shows, you know, where the, where the units are clustered. And so we'll zoom into about this distance. And you can see, you know, there's a lot of clustering around North Town, Downtown, some south of Samoa, a couple in the outlying neighborhoods.
David, what are the colors, Man?
Okay, yes. The colors are a little bit more granular detail than you probably need at this point, but they distinguish between the different types of operators. I guess one, one, if you want to pay attention to the red and green, these are the ones that are exempt. The other ones are non-exempt. And we have, we have about half and half. Right now, we have 153 permits. Not all of those are approved at this point. When I reported to you last week, we had 141 permits. And so a little uptick in the last week. They're running approximately half exempt, half non-exempt. But you can see the dispersion is, is pretty good. We do have a couple that are, you know, immediately adjacent to each other in some of these neighborhoods, but for the most part, you know, the dispersion is, is, is pretty, pretty decent, a couple close together in this neighborhood here. So, you know, that, that is certainly something that you'll, you'll, you know, want to consider. Should we put a limitation on how close these can be together? If you recall, or if you weren't part of the, the original part, discussion, you obviously won't recall this, but one of the things that we talked about when we were adopting this regulation to begin with was the more layers, the more nuanced the regulation is, the more staff time it's going to take to, to operate it and to, to track it and, and make sure that we're enforcing appropriately. And so we went with sort of a slimmed-down version of what we've seen in other jurisdictions. So that's something I wanted to bring to your attention. We have had some concerns that, you know, from neighbors that, hey, my whole neighborhood is, you know, turning into a short-stay vacation rental facility. The other thing that we might want to consider is a limitation on the number of permits that are allowed per parcel. So a couple of, you know, different scenarios came up when we were developing the, the original permit process, you know, and we thought about, you know, if you had an ADU, you know, a primary, secondary unit, that sort of thing. But what we've seen in practice is that at least a couple of property owners have converted, you know, either multifamily structures primarily over to short-stay vacation rentals, so it's basically operating sort of like a hotel. Or we have a few property owners that have, you know, multiple detached units on their site, and they're converting the majority of those to, to vacation rentals. And so, you know, does the council want to consider some sort of limitation on, you know, the total number per site? Right now, we don't have a whole lot of apartment complexes, you know, speculating in the short-stay vacation rental market. But if that, you know, if we did, that would become a significant problem for housing stock, in particular because there's an exemption for properties that have at least one long-term tenant or owner occupied on that property. So you can have a, you know, 30-unit apartment complex, you can rent to one long-term tenant, and under our current regulation, 29 of those could be exempt from regulation under the cap, the limitation of, of 100. So we haven't seen that, you know, yet, but we could see that. And then, you know, the other sort of question that came up, we have just a few property owners who own multiple properties in the City of Arcata, and they've converted all of their, you know, many of those properties over to, to vacation rentals. I don't know if that's a concern to the council, if you wish to regulate how many, any one individual or one entity can own and operate. And then, lastly, I guess, you know, another layer that's been a little vexing to both the public, to the operators who are, you know, trying to get these units through our permit system, and also to staff to try and figure out, you know, when, when do I have the, you know, necessary documentation that I can actually issue the permit and say, yes, you comply with the regulation, is the concept of the exemption in the first place. A lot of folks were worried that they were going to get left out if, you know, they were, you know, just, you know, they were owner-occupied, they wanted to, you know, rent out their ADU, their second unit as a vacation rental instead of to long-term tenants, and they felt like they might get outcompeted by the other folks that are, you know, really in this for, you know, business purposes. And so we set up this, this regulatory framework that said you have a limitation of 100. You can't have any more than 100 unless you have this long-term tenancy. You have a long-term tenant on site, or you live there yourself. And so then we could have as many of those convert to short-stay vacation rentals. There's no limitation, no cap. So right now, we, as I mentioned, have about 153 applications in process. That's about 2% of the housing stock. And I guess one recommendation or consideration that, that staff would like the, the council to take under consideration is whether or not to just say, hey, look, we're gonna, we're gonna have a 2% cap, or we're gonna have, you know, 150 is going to be the limit, or, you know, instead of having this, this unique structure where, you know, we have, you know, have to ask people to try and demonstrate that they have long-term tenancy, you know, on those properties. So there, you know, again, we did not bring forward any, you know, public input into this discussion. There was some sense of urgency among some public members around, you know, conversion of neighborhoods. And so, you know, we brought it as a staff report last time, and now it's a full agenda item. I did attach the ordinance that was enacted that, that, that we use to regulate this program. So if you have any questions about that or any of the material that I presented tonight, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Sure. So before I ask any questions, I do would like there to be a robust public comment period before we make any changes, of course. With that in mind, at our budget meeting, we talked about raising fees. Is that something that's, that's in the staff report?
Yeah, thank you so much, Councilmember Matthews. I did forget to mention that. We do have in your budget staff report a fee resolution which has an increase in the fees for, for this program. I did want to mention it in, at this agenda item, and I forgot, so thank you for bringing that up. We have also found, operating the program over the last year, that our original estimates for the cost to issue these permits was very low. This was a major issue for the community of, of short-stay vacation rental operators. Many of them said, hey, look, I'm operating on a thin margin, and you just can't charge me a lot to, to issue these permits. It's, it's cost prohibitive to me. We are finding that the, the estimates were, you know, two, three times low. And so there's a proposal under the fee resolution to raise the fee to 150 for issuance and $100 for reissuance. We may make a recommendation to adjust those depending on the actions that come out of this. If we can simplify the program, simplify the, the application process through reducing the amount of regulatory, you know, distinctions, you know, if we set the 2% cap or the 150 cap, for example, you know, that would probably lower our cost to issue the permits. But I also want to acknowledge that we are the lowest that I know of for, for a permit fee for issuing these kinds of permits amongst the, the entities that have this kind of a permit program. We're not making money on this. We're covering staff costs, so it's, it's not a moneymaker for the city. And, you know, I do, you know, think we need to balance that. Our recommendation for increasing that fee is really based on not subsidizing this program through general fund money and making sure that the operators that are benefiting from, you know, the, the issuance of these permits are actually paying their, their full burden cost.
Are the fees the same for one unit and those multi-level units?
Right now, the way that the, the fee structure works is that the, the fee is based on the parcel. So if someone has multiple units on the parcel, they could get multiple permits issued for that one fee.
Okay. Is there a way to, like, cap at 2% and then, you know, have a sunset date to that? Is, you know, like, 2% for, you know, three years or two years and then reevaluate?
Yeah, you could build that into the regulation, I think, if you wanted to set up a, a structure, but I, you know, it's, it's fairly simple process to update the ordinance. And so if the council sets it at 2% now, and then in three years, we have new information and the council wants to reassess that, it's, it's a simple process to do that.
Great. And as far as limitation between units, is there a way to, like, grandfather the existing ones in and then kind of, you know, put a cap on that?
Yeah, I think that, that would be probably the fairest way to do it. If you did set, for example, we have 153 applications in right now, you could say, well, let's set the number at 153, or you might make it a more logical 150, and then once we drop below that 150, that would be the limit. But anyone who's in process right now would be able to, you know, go through the process. And if they all were issued permits, they were all demonstrated that they had the ability to, to, you know, to obtain a permit, that they could meet those requirements, then, you know, certainly that's, that's the council's discretion.
Sure. Those would be my recommendations, but absolutely, you know, public outreach before that and then bring it back. That's all the questions I have right now.
I kind of had a question, I mean, maybe just amusing, but I'm, if you get rid of the exemption or, you know, and cap it at that 150 or 2%, whatever, you know, we would want to choose, I mean, we're getting pretty close to that number, so do you think that number one on here, limiting the number of per parcel, would necessarily be an issue? And now I say it out loud, and I'm thinking, yeah, because I guess if somebody wants to, you know, I'm thinking, I don't know, somebody new just bought the fair ones, and if they turn that entire thing into a, you know, short-stay rental, that's kind of an interesting move. And so that kind of leads to my other question is, I mean, what kind of regulation and liability, I mean, are owners like this skirting basically by creating their own hotels? And how can we kind of, I guess, stop that?
Yeah, I, that is a really good question. I'd have to look into that in more detail. I don't know, you know, the, the laws and regulations over hotels well enough to, to speak extemporaneously on it. But yeah, there is definitely a relationship between the, the cap and then if we change the number per parcel, that would be allowed for issuance.
And then my other question was, I'm kind of in regards to the, the complaints. I mean, have, I know that you said you haven't really heard many complaints. Is that to APD, or is that from people participating in the program, or, or both, basically? And that, you know, we just generally haven't heard any complaints about Airbnbs very much?
Yeah, wanted, did, did you have something to add? Okay, okay. Yeah, we did, we inquired with APD, and they have not, to my knowledge, received any complaints. We also, in our department, since we are operating the program, we would, you know, potentially receive complaints as well. You know, certainly there have been, you know, some, some critiques and, and process modifications in the way that we operate the issuance of the permits that we've heard from operators, but we're not hearing, you know, large complaints about the program from the operators at this point. I think everyone's just acquiesced and understood in order to get a, a permit, I need to go through this process.
Great. Oh, go ahead, yeah.
I mean, that being said, I understand the importance of vacation rentals, especially since we just took away two hotels in Arcata. So I definitely appreciate that, but I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Yeah, I was going to add, you know, one of the conversations we did have in the beginning of this, because the other parcel that I think carries quite a number of units was multifamily at the time of converting, but it had prior to that actually been a motel as well. And with the other current example potentially in North Town, you know, maybe, I don't know if we'd look into a definition of something around, previously hotel or something. And I do want to say, we're not making, as Director Loyah indicated, we're not making money on the permit process, right? That's just a planning process with a fee. But we do receive TOT tax. We do receive bed tax on our Airbnb, and that is significant for the city as well.
Yeah, so just kind of to sum up, I, I do agree with Councilmember Matthews that to kind of just, I guess, open this up, we're talking about it here publicly, people know that we're going to make some changes and to, you know, bring it back probably a couple more times and get some of that public outreach on this. But I, I would be interested, and I know it would be difficult to do retroactively probably, definitely, but to, yeah, permit by unit, not necessarily by parcel, and because we are seeing, I know, down on South G Street, there's one that's all Airbnbs, and just thinking of, yeah, like houses, lots of large Victorian houses locally, things like that, that are being converted fully into short-stay rentals, to just kind of explore that. And then I would definitely be in favor of removing the requirement for the, the phone number. I don't think I was ever super into that to begin with. And then I'd like to look a little bit more about, yeah, lumping the exemption just in with that number and creating kind of a set number, because I think that will definitely streamline your guys' department's job and help kind of fill that gap where we're not, you know, where we're losing money on this program. So yeah, that's where I stand on it. But I would like to, yeah, see this back and kind of suss out some of those details for sure.
Yeah, I just want to say I appreciate everybody's patience with me bringing this back. I was not a part of the initial conversation, so thank you.
So this is your agenda item, Meredith? Your request?
No, it's a review.
Okay. Yeah, that's another thing right now, the, the mayor isn't responding to my emails or placing any of my items on the agenda, which is also really unfortunate, so I'm really disappointed about that.
And we're very happy to talk to you on the dais, and we can go over all your agenda items at the end.
Okay.
But yeah, I've been advised by council not to respond to you outside of the chambers, so that's how we're going to play it.
You know, I'm glad you mentioned the hotel conversion, because that's probably the biggest mistake the council's made since I've been on it. And it's going to wreck those businesses and those residents, and it's really unfortunate that, you know, the staff pushed for that. You know, I feel like I do hear complaints, and it's from people who can't afford to buy or rent in Arcata, let alone find a place to live. And as it approaches, I mean, this seems like it spiraled out of control first. You know, we thought a cap of 100 was enough, and now it's over, it's almost 150. So, you know, I'd like to make a motion to get rid of the exemptions and lower the cap to 75.
So do we have a second for that motion?
No, I'd like to wait for some public comment to have it circulated before.
Okay. What I was thinking is, since we have a lot of different ideas floating around, maybe we kind of go through some of those and just see if we have, like, consensus or what we do have to, to move forward, so staff has a little bit of direction, because you're getting a lot of opinions from. So the, the one that I wrote down, Vice Mayor Schaefer brought up, so I wanted to get everyone's opinions on the fees per unit. I, I do support that. It makes sense to me. It doesn't make sense if, if one person is paying the same fee for one as someone else is paying for five. So it seems like it should be per unit. So I would love feedback from, from, from all of you on that.
Yeah.
Do you have thoughts on that?
I don't have an opinion. Whatever you guys want to do on that side of things.
Okay, so that's something to kind of to, to put out there for, for next round? And to just make a point, because, you know, you're indicating you want to lower the cap, that, you know, by nature, that would make it be harder to get a permit. If you want to permit five things on your parcel, then that is minus five from this number overall. And so I think, you know, just to put that out there.
Okay, and so we've had a couple, a couple of different numbers thrown out for caps. I think Councilmember Watson suggested 75.
I think Councilmember Watson suggested 75. I was thinking, since we've already got the applications and such, 150. Do we have any other suggestions for numbers before we kind of take a straw poll?
I think 150 is, or 2%, what's 2% right now?
The difference between establishing it at 2% and 150 is that as we add new units, you'd have, the cap would grow, if you said it was 2% of housing stock. There's also a little bit of, you know, uncertainty around the total number of units in the city of Arcata. We get, you know, estimates through the census, so 150 would be a lot easier to say, yes, we can count to 150.
Okay, that's fine with me then, 150 works.
Would it be like, in the case of, like, I'm thinking, what we talked about with the dispensaries, I mean, if we removed the exemption but left the cap at 100, that then it could just ultimately go down to that?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
I think too, go ahead.
I was just going to ask a question on the numbers. When you count to 153, that still, is that per, is that units, or is that parcels between exempt and non-exempt?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So it's total of permits, so even though you may, if you have five units that are under the program on a single parcel, it's one fee, but it's five permits. And so that's, we have 150 units right now that are in this process or actively engaged in short-stay vacation rental. And I guess the only thing I would say to, you know, to that last question was that, you know, it does, there is some replacement, you know, in the market around, you know, the hotel rooms. So if, you know, if you said, look, you know, right now is probably a pretty healthy indicator of what our, you know, what our sort of background market need is at 150 units, you know, that, I guess, is where, you know, I would, why I would recommend you consider that. The 2% is also kind of an indicator of, like, background market need, you know, as the population grows, maybe that need also grows. But I also think that, you know, as we, you know, go through the general plan updates and the, you know, rezones associated with that, we may also see, you know, increase in interest from hoteliers in opening and operating hotels here. So we could also get, you know, additional units through that process as well. That's a little speculative, but it's just something to consider.
Yeah, and before we really truly move forward on this too, I would really like to get some more specific numbers, just looking at, because it says in here that there's 141, including exempt and non-exempt, just to see that breakdown, and then I would love a copy of that map, just to, again, kind of consider the distance between units and know where they are. Every once in a while, I like to peruse Airbnb and see where I could stay in this lovely city, but it's a lot of work to dig through the website, so it would be nice to have the map.
So if we do decide to have some limitation between units, what's something that you would recommend? What sounds, I mean, what's reasonable? What do other cities do?
I'm sorry, if we decided to do what between? Oh, distance between the units. There, you know, it's all over the map. Some jurisdictions have said you can't have more than one on a block, some have, you know, a numeric distance, 300, 500 feet. And so it really, you know, it really does just sort of depend on, you know, what the, you know, the policy preference is, I guess, based on that. And, you know, I can certainly research and talk to other jurisdictions and try and find out, why did you recommend, you know, this specific distance, and then bring that back, and also bring it through the engagement that we'll do with the existing operators.
I really appreciate that, that'd be great, thank you.
I just had a question for all of you. When you're recommending, like, the 75 or 100 and 150, were you talking about permits or actual units? I'm asking you guys.
That's the same, isn't it?
Yeah, total permits, which equates to the total number of units.
Oh, so they have a permit, but they don't have to pay the additional fees?
Fee.
Oh, okay, got it, so, okay.
Yep.
Sorry about that. So it looks like we are going to change the cap, but we're going to have to do a little more discussion on that, because we have lots of different numbers up here, so. It seems like we don't have a big consensus on, or seem, concern about posting a phone number. I don't, I'm pretty neutral in that, I'm happy to take that out if that's for the rest. Okay, so it seems like we have consensus on that. Is there anything else that you need from?
You know, what if we replace the phone number with the Arcata Police Department phone number, just so they have somebody to call?
Yeah.
A non-emergency number.
Well, I think- Yeah, non-emergency, I think is a decent idea. Well, wasn't the issue price for putting a sign up? Is that what the complaint was, or was it for privacy? I thought it was about price.
People are concerned about privacy, but there are certainly lots of workarounds for that. You can get a Google phone number that doesn't display your actual phone number and put that up, it'll ring through your existing line, so we've been advising people around that. Really, the whole, the motivation between ensuring that there was a phone number visible from the street was so that, number one, you know, people could identify that, hey, look, this is a short-stay vacation rental, and number two, that their first call isn't to city services, to put the burden on city services, that if there's a bad actor in that unit, the first call is to the management team that's, you know, supposed to be ensuring that, you know, they're complying with, you know, city regulations. And so, you know, I would certainly, I think the chief is in the building, and so if he may, you know, wish to comment on that piece or not, I'm not sure, but I know that was also a concern of the APD when we were bringing these regulations forward initially, is that they would then, you know, start receiving a lot of calls.
Well, I mean, if it's just regarding privacy, there are the workarounds, so that's, but again, I'm kind of, I'm not very passionate about this either way, so.
Well, I think in the opening, the idea was that we haven't received the phone calls that, you know, we anticipated in it, so maybe it was not as necessary as the original concern, but.
Okay, so it seems like if it's going to streamline things, we don't have too many concerns about that up here, and then I guess if we do start, we can always revisit it, right? If we start getting complaints or there's other issues. Is there anything else that you'd like direction from us for?
No, I think that's a good start, and, you know, I think the community conversation will, you know, elevate other issues for the council to consider and for, you know, future dialogue.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
Hi, my name's Joanne McCarry. I'm a resident of Arcata. I'm a tenant. I will be a lifelong tenant, I imagine. I love living in this community, I love sharing it with people who come to visit. I just attended a wonderful celebration of the new microgrid up at the airport this morning, and in terms of energy and equity and efficiency, I would really like, in the climate action plan discussions and bringing up this short-stay vacation rental concept, that we maybe consider, if people have short-stay vacation rentals that they are operating, that an energy audit and energy efficiency effort be made, electrification by a certain date. You know, a lot of people who come here, maybe they're not familiar with our cold weather in the winter or whatever, and will exercise excessive use of different energy resources. So I think this might be a good start in our community to get better energy conservation and climate action, you know, in the homes and in the units that are being visited by people from outside here, and that people who own those units are benefiting financially from. So a concept of a energy-efficient unit and renewable energy type of thing by a certain date might be a consideration, not necessarily for this immediate ordinance, but in the whole thought process of the holistic approach to how we're moving into the future. Because I don't want people to come up here and turn their heat on to an excessive degree or, you know, cook with gas, even if they can have an electric or an inductive stove in their unit. You know, all those types of things, solar, whatever, but, you know, these are thoughts I'm just thinking of for the future in considering what we can do to make sure that this is a great place to visit and learn from how to live for the future, so they can go back to their place and maybe implement some of those things that have been implemented here. So just a thought to toss out there.
Thank you, Joanne.
Hello, Chris Richards here. I think another way of looking at this, that with the vacation rentals that you guys haven't really discussed, is the demand for those. I mean, you're describing that folks are complaining they can't make enough money to pay your measly permit fee. I mean, are there any, is there any data of how empty are these homes during the year? What are the demands for vacation homes? I think that might give you a clearer picture of, maybe your 2%, is it high enough for the demand? Or maybe, you know, thinking about folks that don't have homes to live in would be more of a concern, especially if you got, if you added up the data of how many homes are just sitting empty for X amount of time during the year, maybe the number should be lower, more like 75 or something, you know. I think that data would be an interesting thing to see, to try to determine, you know, how many should we really even have? Anyway, that's all I had.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, hi, Paul Patino. I'm a short-stay vacation rental operator on my, I'm exempt because it's the house I own, and I keep a room in it. Talking about energy, if somebody comes in and just turns the heat on, central heat, and just leaves it on, it's going to cost me a lot of money. And there's no, I don't, I can't charge them after. So it behooves the operator to instruct the people and let them, let them know that there's ways of operating the central heat, so that you don't cost me 100 bucks for your three-day stay. So it's a really operator thing. That's one. The other one is, I would like Airbnb to collect my TOT and send it to you, instead of me having to do that. There are entities, I understand maybe the county or city of Eureka collects, Airbnb collects for them. So why can't we have that happen in Arcata? All you have to do is tell Airbnb, you collect in Arcata. Anybody that's paying Airbnb and listing on Airbnb, Airbnb will collect and send it to you, and I don't have to do that part. And it guarantees that people who don't have permits and slip in and put their thing on Airbnb end up having to pay, even if they haven't got a permit. So I'd like to see that done. I understand, I don't understand why we don't do that, since at least one other entity in the county does that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Hello, Alex Stillman. So it's, in the city of Palm Springs, they have a whole plan for what you do about Airbnbs or vacation rentals. And also, when you rent it, one, you have to sign an agreement, and you can't, whatever the agreement says, you have to abide by. So if you decide to have a big party and your agreement doesn't say that, your neighbor, a neighbor can report you, the police can come and remove everyone from there and stand there while they leave, and then the doors get locked, and that's it, they can't go back in. So you may want to just take a look at what Palm Springs has been doing, and they have in, I was there for the film festival last year, and we stayed in, it wasn't Airbnb, it was a vacation rental, and they had this, you had to sign this document, and you saw it was posted there, and that's what happens. Some neighbors, friends that had neighbors in one of the neighborhoods down there said that that's, they just took everyone out, the police did. So it would be nice if you have neighbors complaining, just as you mentioned, the police don't get any calls, but if they did, this would be a way to handle it. And I would look into that documentation that Palm Springs uses, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Do we have people calling in online for this?
All right, our first online, go ahead and raise your hand, or press star nine if you're on the phone. Our first speaker is Jane, go ahead, Jane.
I recall when this issue of how many cap, what kind of a cap we should have, was set at 100 in front of the Economic Development Committee. We had Airbnb, we had, we had vacation rental people there, including an organization that did, that managed those. And we had no discussion at the time of the existence of any exemption, okay? So we thought we were setting and agreeing to a cap of 100, period. And at the time, we thought there were only about 80. That was probably about three or four years ago, maybe five years ago. So something changed in a major way that now we have this exemption, I don't know when that came in. But the reason we were setting a cap was to maintain housing. We didn't want people to have vacation rentals and take those off the market for people who might need housing, either long-term rentals, students needing rentals while they were at school, et cetera. So I think, and I think the concept is that you need to set a specific number, like 150, if we're already stuck there, because we already have grandfathered properties. But I think then each, it should not be a fee per property, per parcel, it should be a fee per permit, because that's grossly unfair for a single property owner with multiple units to just pay one fee. So I would highly suggest that the basic reason for capping this is to preserve housing for people who need long-term rentals, or certainly, like, student leases, things like that. There are plenty of places people can find to stay if they're on vacation, and we have other Airbnbs. So, anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Jane.
All right, I see no other online comments?
Okay, I did have a question. I was curious about what Paul brought up, about the collection of fees. That makes sense to me, I know sometimes as business owners, there's a lot of things to keep track of, so is, have we looked into that, or, you know?
We did. When the county first, when Airbnb first agreed to enter into agreements, and the county of Humboldt did, at the time, and this was several years ago, at the time, many of our short-stay rentals were not operating through Airbnb. You know, HomeAway was big then, VRBO was big then, and now Vacasa seems to be growing in this area, so we'd have to just take a look. We have done a couple of audits of our short-stay rentals in order to try to capture, you know, the vast majority of the market here in Arcata. But that is why, because it's just then an agreement with one of the operators, only Airbnb, so either we just lose, you know, additional TOT from those operators that are working with Airbnb if they're also renting them on their own, or they still have to report it into us, and then there are still several others that would just be reporting into us, so. But it's something where we certainly can revisit when we meet with the operators, to see, kind of, what's that percentage split in Arcata right now, and it's maybe changed.
Okay, I mean, that sounds good to me, do I have, what are the rest of you guys think?
Yeah, I'd be interested to find out more about that and the feasibility, but I do know that, yeah, there's, Airbnb is actually becoming, I think, yeah, the less popular one for a lot of people to use, so I don't know.
Yeah, you know, it sounds good to me, and it, I just recall that, you know, you recommended that we give away $200,000 of TOT when we did the conversion, so it seems like losing any TOT on this would just be a drop in the bucket.
Okay, so it sounds like we have consensus to do some exploration into that. And, I mean, obviously, we want to capture all the TOTs, though, you know, so it might come in in different shapes and forms, but we can look into this for this particular one. And getting tax money is cool, but people having housing is way more awesome than that, in my opinion, so, yeah.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on this particular item? Okay, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, so we'll be back at 8:16, thank you. Thank you.
And the appendices that we've uploaded are the open house posters and the visioning summaries, which have been on the website for over a year. The other ones, we will definitely try and get up as soon as we can. All of the appendices are just the raw data that we summarized in the report. So the themes that we can say pretty comfortably have come out would be definitely a reinforced support for infill development, alternative transportation, and walkability, and really just continuing to underscore that need for additional housing development, as we've talked about tonight. All of that is pretty clearly laid down in the current general plan and in our current adopted housing element. We're going to try and build on that philosophy, and many of the main tenants and goals of the current general plan will likely remain relatively similar. It also, our work so far has definitely also reinforced a need and support for considering how to ensure racially equitable outcomes of our work and really evaluating that policy to make sure we are doing our best, as best as we can for current and future residents. And I would say the area that we're going to be looking to continue the most work is really design. How will additional housing, additional development guide the look, feel, and function of our city moving forward? And how do we ensure that we continue that really excellent, high level of design that Arcata has enjoyed for so long? And I did want to just point out that packet pages 225, 226, 227, basically, the draft kind of themes and conclusions does include a lot of the main themes that we're seeing so far, as well as some potential questions for the next phase of community engagement, which include how to ensure excellent quality of design through a form-based code, and what standards should be required versus optional moving forward items like solar access, building, siting, and design that were commonly noted as concerns in our engagement. So on that note, before I turn it over to David, I did want to just plug our form-based code information session, kind of to speak to some of the concerns that were raised during public comment. We're having basically a brown bag recorded Zoom session noon to 1:30 next week, a week from today, July 29. And the Zoom link for that is available on the city's website, from the Flash page, the homepage, as well as from our Cert page. And we will have it available on the city's YouTube page and on our Cert page after the fact as well. So that is what I wanted to cover with you. Thank you for letting me speak, and I'll turn it over to David.
You know, it seems like because there's a kind of a significant amount of content about the Gateway Plan, I'm just wondering if the right thing to do is for you to recuse yourself?
Yeah, I mean, this is new to me, so I'm happy to if that's what's recommended. My understanding was this was all like high-level and procedural, so we're not making any decisions, so I didn't need to, but I will defer to council. If you think that I need to recuse myself, I'm happy to do that. My initial understanding was I didn't need to, but I'm fine either way.
As Nancy's coming up, I also want to point out that this is related to the general plan work that we're doing, the engagement on the general plan. And so there is some specific detail on Gateway, which is an element of the general plan, but it's also the efforts that we're doing overall.
I would suggest that you not talk about the Gateway Plan at all, and you have your discussion around the other issues, and then if the Gateway Plan needs to be discussed tonight, then you can recuse yourself.
Okay, we could do that.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll just try to keep it siloed. And I'm sure there will be Gateway discussions, so when we get to that, I'm happy to leave.
Okay, thank you. The only, thank you, Dilo. I think the only thing I wanted to add to that part of the discussion is that, you know, part of the challenge with bringing this document forward is that we wanted to make sure that we had done enough engagement, that we had, you know, reached out to enough groups before, you know, pulling it together. And then also, as you can see, it's a, you know, it's a lengthy document documenting a lot of the work that we've done. But it's a living draft. It's a living document. And so as we continue to do more engagement work around, you know, the general plan, you know, this document will grow. And, you know, ultimately, we will pull together an executive summary and try and, you know, highlight, as Senior Planner Fredus was pointing out, some of the common themes that we're hearing. But this document really will go hand in hand with sort of transitioning now to Attachment B, a description of, you know, the process that we've been working through and is, at this point, now in question. So I wanted to bring this forward to the council for consideration, and also to, you know, get your, you know, thinking caps on around the process that we're working through. And then ultimately, as you have a joint study session with the Planning Commission, it'd be a good, you know, one of the topics of conversation to have with them to talk about, you know, how we, you know, how we structure the engagement and whether we're, you know, what the timelines are and those sorts of issues. So let me just start by saying, you know, on the, just what the document does. So on packet page 274, put together a, you know, kind of the working outline, and this can, you know, obviously be modified, but there's a working outline of how, you know, we've been working through this material to date. And then, starting on packet page 275, a couple pages of more detailed discussion around, you know, what the process is. It's a very big process, and, you know, it's a lot to wrap your arms around. And I've tried to, you know, simplify it in this document in a manner that really highlights the important pieces, the core pieces that are required, and then there are some other elements that are, you know, certainly flexible and influx. So that's what this document is intended to do, and, you know, as the conversation evolves, you know, we can modify if there's new direction to, you know, to change the way that we're conducting the engagement. You know, we can modify this document, and that'll help everyone understand what it is that we're doing. So the one first piece that I think there was a little bit of confusion about, related to, you know, who the decision-maker is in this process, this is a legislative action. You're changing the laws. It's not discretionary action in the sense of like, you know, issuing a permit. It's a lawmaking action. You're setting policy, and from that policy, you'll set zoning. That zoning will be, you know, the regulations that implement this policy. So as a legislative action, the council is the decision-maker. There's no other body in the City of Arcata that makes decisions, per se. They make recommendations, and so they're all recommending bodies. So I wanted that to be clear. I've had a couple of conversations with, you know, community members, and that was a little unclear why the council is making a decision when this is sort of a planning-related issue, why isn't the Planning Commission making the decision, and so on and so forth. I've described to you in a prior staff report, I think two meetings ago, I want to say, I'd have to double-check my records, to, you know, the relationship of the timeline to the, you know, the grants and the housing element commitments that we made. And so I know some people have voiced concerns about that tonight. I'd encourage them to go back and listen to that more detailed presentation about, you know, what our grant obligations are, the uncertainty around those, what our housing element obligations are. And we're working with HCD to resolve on, you know, what the impact of, you know, different outcomes, different scenarios might be if we're, you know, late on delivery, if we don't deliver what we said we were going to deliver, and those kinds of issues. But the engagement process that you have before you tonight, and what I'll describe to you, is a process that gets us as close as possible to being able to meet those objectives and to demonstrate to those agencies, whether it's HCD or the granting agencies, that we are fulfilling those commitments, that we're working really hard to fulfill those commitments. That's not to say that, you know, there may be some flexibility or decisions that the council makes to, you know, to take a different process that might take a little longer, that, you know, may have, you know, different repercussions or outcomes, and we can talk about those as your interest dictates. But this issue came up at the last Planning Commission meeting, and I explained, you know, kind of, you know, without preparation, just sort of, you know, extemporaneously at that time, what the process is. I had been working on this document, and I figured this would be a good time to bring it to the council so that you're thinking about it as well and have some idea about why it's structured this way and what the various alternatives are. So I'm going to transition. This is my cue to our IT working in the back, that I've got a PowerPoint presentation. So I just want to walk through a little bit about what process we're currently going through and what some alternative processes are, and a little bit of the discussion and maybe some confusion that happened at the Planning Commission meeting. So right now, we've got, you know, these draft elements of the general plan that are coming out. Our consultant is working on the elements. If you look in the last staff report where we outlined the timeline, you'll see the timeline for when each of these elements is anticipated to be released. You know, depending on, you know, their work and our review, we may fall behind schedule or get certain things ahead of schedule. But for the most part, the idea is that, look, as soon as these elements come out, then we release them to everybody. Everybody is reviewing them concurrently, simultaneously, you get the element. We're bringing them directly to the Planning Commission, which meets every other week, or by week. They meet second and fourth Tuesday of the month. On a fifth week, month, they won't meet every other week. But they meet every other week, so they meet, you know, regularly, and so they're seeing the updates as they're coming out. We're having discussions at the Planning Commission about the content that's in there. The various committees, they meet, some of them meet monthly. For example, the Historic Landmarks Committee meets monthly. Some of these committees meet by month, or every other month. And so their review, their first formal review, won't happen for a couple of months after, more than likely after the element is released, unless the timing works out just right. So all of the review bodies, the various committees and the Planning Commission, who are going to make a recommendation to the council ultimately, who makes the decision, are reviewing these elements concurrently. The recommendations, what we've outlined to date, is that staff would compile these recommendations, along with recommendations that are coming, you know, suggestions that are coming from the public, you know, changes that we're noting as we're going through the process, and bring all those to the council ultimately, who will make a final decision about what to be included in those elements. Now, some of the recommendations, there's a lot of alignment in those recommendations. And so there's a lot of alignment both, you know, cross groups, but also from, you know, meeting the goals and objectives that are outlined in the general plan. And so what staff is proposing is that you would see those in-line as track changes, edits. You'd be able to go back and see earlier versions if you wanted to, to go back and see, okay, well, what changes had happened since the last one, and we'll try and find a way to do those track changes internally so you can see which ones had been updated. Haven't quite figured that piece out yet, but that's our goal. The, there are other areas, you know, building height is a perfect example, where, you know, there's a lot of disagreement in the community about what the appropriate building height is for certain areas. And so you might see, you know, if we were to go through and do a track changes version of that, every time a committee said, hey, we want you to change this, you know, building height to six, now we want you to change it to four. Another committee says, you know, let's change it to three, you know, the track changes would get, you know, out of control, number one, and number two would be, you know, a lot of, you know, wasted staff time to continuously update this document, release it, and get it circulated back again. So the proposal is to have the track changes version of recommendations that align with the existing adopted policy or goals and objectives that have been outlined previously, and then to bring forward a table, tabular format, identifying the issue and outlining the different suggestions that have been made around that issue as to how to modify the document, along with a staff recommendation and hopefully, at that point, a Planning Commission recommendation. So this concurrent review and process for bringing forward these, you know, these competing suggestions, we believe is the most efficient way to bring this information forward to you and does the best job of trying to meet the commitments that we've outlined in these other documents. So I want to walk you through that process a little bit. This is kind of what, you know, what it would look like. You go through draft element review first time, these agencies. This first pass, you know, depending on when the committee meets, is going to take between one and three months.
Is this, where in this process are we right now?
We're right in the middle of it, yeah. The blue, we've reviewed open space, we've reviewed the, throw me a lifeline. We've reviewed a couple of elements. Growth management, reviewed a couple of elements at the Planning Commission level. They're also reviewing a body of policy that I can't talk about right now. So we're right in the middle of this process right now. We've gone to the committees previously and talked generally, conceptually, about what is in these updates and what they'd like to see, but they haven't seen, none of the committees have seen the draft elements yet, with the exception of the body of policy we're not discussing. So once we go through this first pass, and everybody has had a chance to review the document, you know, some of these committees will have been able to, you know, make recommendations, and the Planning Commission may have seen those, but, you know, this method doesn't accommodate all of the committees first reviewing it and then sharing that with the Planning Commission. So we get to a point, staff collates all of those, the Planning Commission has, you know, one last crack at the review and makes a recommendation to the city council. You'd be able to look at those in-line revisions and say, yeah, that looks like to me that it really comports with the policy that we've identified, we want to include those, or pull these ones out. You'd be able to look at the table that has the competing recommendations, you know, go six stories, go three, and be able to decide at that point for, you know, whichever the area in town is that, you know, the change is being made, that, look, we want to pick, you know, whatever the recommendation is. So then, that way, the Planning Commission, or the city council, rather, has the ability to go through and balance those competing policy interests and try and, you know, look at it holistically. If, you know, you pull on this string, you know, it pulls on this string over here, and we try and line all that up, and then you have a conversation around that, and you say, okay, this is what we want to see happen, is to make all of these various changes and not these ones. Then that goes one more time. Every committee would have an opportunity, not a requirement, to look at that. So that basically looks like this, the council, if he sees his first pass, and then if there's, if it seems necessary, you have, you know, certain bodies of information, you really want the creeks and wetlands, for example, to look at. You'd go back for a second pass potentially and, you know, go one more time through specific committees that feel like they need to see it. This is going to be a commitment on the committee's parts. It may mean having special meetings. It may mean having, you know, special working sessions with the Planning Commission, study sessions with the city council to get through this process in this timeframe. But we think that we can do this first pass in one and a half to three and a half months from now, based on the work that we've done from now, based on the work that we've done to date and the work that we have yet to go. And if we needed to do a second pass, that that could take anywhere between three and four and a half months total. So this is what that looks like. The animations are all off, but the Planning Commission and committees review simultaneously, provide changes to the city council. City council makes a decision about those changes, and what's missing here is the second round. But this is the format that's being proposed now, the two and a half to four and a half months. An alternative, and what I heard the Planning Commission, some Planning Commissioners discussing as an alternative to this, is to have the committees review before the Planning Commission review. So the committees' review process, it's going to take between a month and three months, depending on which committee. They meet, some meet every other month. Go through the Planning Commission review. We're going to add a month on to that after they've reviewed those.
Is that realistic, that the Planning Commission will only take a month to go through?
I'm trying to give a, you know, sort of the best-case scenario for each of these different timelines.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to keep interrupting you.
No, it's a great question. It's a really great question. This is the best-case timeline for each of these scenarios, certainly with the, and actually, let me come back to that point when I've described this in a little more detail. So the Planning Commission makes a review, and if they don't make changes, then they basically have the recommendation from the committees. They've then made a recommendation, and it didn't change anything the committees suggested. They forward that on to the city council, and then you go through your review. If you don't make changes, there's no need to send it back to another committee or a second pass. That, again, we could hit around that two and a half to four and a half month mark. To your point, that probably isn't terribly realistic. There are going to be changes along the way, and so you'd have at least one cycle back where you'd add at least a month and a half and probably more. That cycle would then, once it got through that first loop of committees to Planning Commission, changes back to committees, back to Planning Commission, you would have that to the city council, assuming there were no further changes. And this timeline looks more like four and a half to six months. If the city council then decides, well, hey, look, you know, we want to make changes now that we've waited for all of these documents to finally get to us, we want to make changes, then you'd have to do a second pass at that, going back to the committees presumably. I mean, again, this is flexibility. If you said, look, we're going to make changes, and we're just going to send it back to the Planning Commission, you know, that would change this timeline, but... And then if the Planning Commission did another loop through the committees because they made changes, you can see this is starting to stack up. So this process, you know, I'm estimating at a best-case scenario, anywhere between eight to 11 months with sort of an iterative serial review.
How does that kind of work into all the grant funding that we're...
So right now, we have, some of our grants are end at the end of this year, some end at the end of next year. So the grants ended at the end of this year. If we don't have a work product, there's going to be some concerns. The, one of our granting agencies, the Department of Conservation, has said that they're, they've already told us, look, we're going to be flexible. The HCD, who's managing and overseeing our SB2 funds, have said these deadlines are firm. You have to finish your expenditures by July, you have to produce your work product by the end of the year.
I'm sorry. So, and I can wait until...
No, please.
These are like fresh... So these, all of these reviews of the Planning Commission, does this include reviewing, like, form-based codes? Does this include reviewing 3D models? Or is it just like real high-level stuff?
So this, at this point, is going to cover all of the general plan updates. The zoning required to implement these is going to have to come after the fact. You know, frankly, we're still working through this, so I don't want to, you know, indicate too much, but we're concerned that if we bring it all as a bundle, that there are going to be, you know, conflicts of interest that prevent the work getting done. So we're breaking off the general plan. There's an exemption for general plan amendments. So, you know, and the EIR will still cover all of those other zoning amendments, but we'll just need to bring those forward one at a time to try and play, you know, play against whatever those various conflicts of interest might be.
So the committees and the Planning Commission, they can agree on building heights and whatnot and give recommendations on that without form-based codes and ministerial rights and all of that stuff?
Yeah, I think so. And we'll be going through, we'll be going through some of the, you know, the form-based code engagement concurrently with this. And, you know, and again, I mean, as I discussed earlier, you know, there's been some discussion and questioning whether or not, you know, form-based code is the correct approach. And so the, you know, the council and the Planning Commission certainly need to weigh in on that. The work that we do towards that form-based code will still be, you know, valuable to the community, but I certainly don't want to invest in creating a form-based code, you know, these very valuable dollars that we have very limited access to, to then later find out that, you know, the community or the council isn't interested in a form-based So the difference here, it does impact those grant-funded, some of the grant-funded work that we're doing, but it also affects the, you know, the housing element commitment. There was a rezone requirement in the housing element to certify it. We're working with HCD. We don't have a clear path yet, but we're working with HCD to get a clear path on, you know, is there some leniency? What I fully anticipate is we're going to get an enforcement letter when we reach out to them and let them know that, you know, we're not going to make the rezone by August of this year. You know, we've talked to them about, you know, we've, you know, asked them about, you know, COVID, you know, delay for COVID and various other items. Those conversations are still ongoing, but I'm anticipating an enforcement letter that basically says, hey, look, you need to get these done. This is the first letter. If you don't make significant progress, you know, so on and so forth. So the one-time pass, the difference between these two processes, the one-time pass, you know, gets us closer to meeting those objectives. I also just want to, you know, recognize that, you know, we are not going to, at least for the housing element and for the grant funds that are required to be, or the work products that is required to be done by the end of this year, we're not going to meet them. I don't think there's any way possible that we get through this process by the end of this year. So we've extended the timeline. We're looking at, you know, spring of next year, late winter, spring of next year. So we're still facing those penalties regardless. So one thing the council could consider is that, you know, look, if we're already going to face these penalties, then, you know, pressure's off, let's, you know, let's just take the time we need. We will have to, at some point, you know, consider whether or not the grant funds have to be repaid. If they do, that's approximately $500,000 that we have in, you know, in our grant-funded monies that we would have to replace through some other source to pay those granting agencies back. You know, and then those time constraints at least would be off. The, you know, the housing element certification is still a significant barrier, and if you recall from my discussion, when we talked about the timeline previously, being out of compliance with the housing element doesn't just affect housing grants. It's now tied to a host of other granting agencies. There's been a lot of integration at the state level. A lot of these funds are coming from, you know, from climate change money, money that's been allocated through, you know, through climate change bills, and so there's, you know, a lot of integration between those and housing elements. And so it's intertwined with transportation funds, you know, many other funding sources. And if we're not certified, we're not eligible for those funds.
Yeah, and it's also affecting people that need housing. So while I understand that, you know, we might not meet this, I still don't think we need to, like, drag our feet, I guess, is...
Yeah. So here's the process, again, just to sort of recap what we're recommending at the staff level to try and, you know, get us as close as we possibly can be to meeting those commitments. I'd certainly be happy to answer any additional questions you have, and I know the community has some comments on this process as well.
Did we finish the short-stay vacation, Ronald? I don't... What do we decide to do?
Just in direction.
We came up with those kind of items of consensus and then told staff to bring it back. They're going to do some public engagement and bring it back.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And so I really appreciate the high-level overview. I feel like this is probably going to devolve into being more specifically regarding Gateway, and I just think that I don't want to limit my colleagues from trying to speak around issues. So I think that just the easiest thing for me to do on this is to recuse myself so that you can speak openly and what you need to do. And so I will turn this over to the vice mayor, and I'll come back when it's done. So thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So let's just maybe go down the line, ask our questions that we have, and then we'll open it up to public comment questions and/or other, you know, comments and concerns that we have about this lovely and thorough engagement report.
Yeah, so I appreciated this engagement report. It was very long. It was a fun night. The one thing that really stood out to me, though, just seeing the demographics of the people that have responded to this over and over again, pre-boomer, boomer, Gen X, white, English-speaking homeowners. So, I mean, I know that we're trying our best to do outreach to some of these underserved, you know, people, but the fact of the matter is, these people, they're, it's going to be hard for them to engage. They're the ones that are working two jobs. They're the ones that are too busy to engage because they're busy earning a living. So I feel like it's our job to kind of be their voice. So, I mean, unless we can figure out a way to get to them, I think that it's, you know, the onus is on us to kind of speak for them as far as their need for housing, so...
Yeah, if I could just mention real quick, we have done, you know, several will-come-to-you sessions around this material. We've, you know, engaged with students. We did attempt to have a Spanish-language town hall, similar to the one that we held at the community center, and it was not well-attended. We had one Spanish speaker and five English speakers. So we'll continue to try different methods to reach out. When it comes to engaging, you know, marginalized populations, demographics, it is just, it's really, really difficult, and a lot of it is really network-based. We are, you know, one of the things that... We are, you know, one of the things that, you know, I'll mention is that the REAP money, the 30, up to 33,000 that you approved earlier today, a large chunk of that is really dedicated to doing some of the racial equity outreach and engagement. And we've, we've hired on additional capacity of, you know, Orem Blank that, you know, have expertise and connections into the community. And so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to, you know, improve on that, but I do think you're, you're correct in your assessment.
Yeah, and along with that, you know, I've been talking to Dushka Mathu, and I do feel like, you know, we're on, we are land and we are people cannot afford to live here. And so we need to do our due diligence by making sure we set aside someplace for them as well.
Yeah, I feel like that was a reoccurring theme in the report as well, just, you know, that, and lens that we've been talking about. And I recall that you spoke about it last time, David, just having that racial equity approach, having that land acknowledgement kind of, you know, be a part of this plan. I had a quick question. It seemed like there were two surveys in here, but I think that they were the same. Is, am I correct? Okay. I was like trying to see the difference. I was like, I think these are the same survey, but I didn't know. And then I did have a question, and I guess I think you kind of answered it when, but these, these income brackets, and it just says like level one through six, I mean, what is the breakdown of that? Because, yeah, 38% is in level six, which I imagine is probably the highest income in that. And so just to kind of echo what Meredith said, that, and I've, I've had this conversation with Karen before, I think I had it with you as well, David, just that, yeah, it does seem a little skewed in the homeowner direction. I recall being on a walking tour, and I think myself and Joanne and one other young lady my age were the only renters in about a tour of 40 people, which is really not reflective, yeah, of, of, you know, the, the community here. But, and again, I know that it is obviously, yeah, we've given the opportunity and we go to these people, but, you know, how much are their voices being heard? But back to the original question, yeah, what are these income levels, I guess, was my main?
Yeah, and I apologize for, for that. I think, you know, we're, again, this is a living document. We wanted to try and get as much of the raw data into the document as possible. And this, that, the survey questions, some of them, you can, you know, suss out what the question was, but we really need to include along with that, the, the questions that we asked, the survey questionnaires, so that you can understand that. I don't have, off the top of my head, what the income levels were, but they did go from low income to high income.
And that, yeah, and you indicated that that's going to be all like something probably that will be in those dependencies online as well. And you said the, the signs are all in there, right? Like, I just, my one problem was I couldn't zoom in, you know, I want to like pinch and zoom in, so, but I imagine on the computer, I'll be able to do that. So, yeah, thank you. I guess I have a couple other things, if we're just talking about, you know, engagement process, just kind of things, I think that we've talked about that I know people in the community have asked for and wanted to see, but I think like Councilmember Matthews brought it before, solar shading, modeling, things like that, and kind of, you know, a more design process where there's something that you can like physically look at. And I think that is a lot more accessible to everyday people that don't know about planning and don't know about what actually a four-story building might look like in comparison to an eight-story building, even if it's on, you know, small scale, you can still tell the difference. And so having like a little bit more of a, yeah, kind of like a manipulative visual way to have people engage, I think, will be really helpful. But that's all I have right now, so I'll pass it. If you have any comments or questions, Councilmember Watson?
Yeah. You know, I'm glad to hear that we are being mentioned, and I've always felt like the greatest gesture we could make as a city is to kind of follow Eureka's lead and give them some city property. I know that it's not always been supported by the staff, but I think that's something we should consider. So my question is, how long did this draft take to complete?
I'm sorry, how long does what?
Did the draft take to complete?
So the four and a half months, if we do two passes, essentially when you would have a draft that is, you know, the draft that you're considering for approval, then we have to go through a sequel process. And so the sequel process would, you know, take the timelines that it takes, you know, let's estimate, you know.
I guess, I'm sorry, I guess I meant, I don't know if we're talking about the same thing, the, I got this copy of the draft Gateway Plan.
Yes.
When did this come out?
When did it come out? Oh, I'm sorry, December of 2021.
Oh, so that's it, so we've had this. Okay. I thought it was, I thought it was a new document, sorry.
We, we had-
It's the same one. They just got it a second time. Same one.
It seems like the, you know, from the schedule life scene for the Gateway Area Plan, that, you know, we're really, Plan West is really far behind schedule. Is that, is that correct?
They had a schedule in their original RFP response that we've had to modify multiple times for various external reasons, and so we're, we're not on that schedule. The, you know, the schedule was originally designed around direction that had been given by prior councils, and so we made an aggressive schedule to produce the work product based on that prior direction. Pretty shortly after the, the reports were released, there were, you know, significant questions in the community, significant questions by the Planning Commission, whether we were doing a specific plan, are we really doing a form-based code, you know, sort of calling into question sort of the underpinnings to the entire endeavor. And so I asked our consultant, and I've said this in many public settings, that we asked our consultant to tap the brakes on some of these work products. If they produce a draft form-based code, that's money that I can't spend on some other document. If ultimately the Planning Commission and City Council direct staff to not do a form-based code, I don't want to have already spent that money. So instead of bringing the form-based code and the Gateway Plan out at the same time as was originally envisioned, you know, we were, you know, re, retooling the approach to try and be responsive and sensitive to public engagement that we were experiencing.
So we have a joint session coming up soon. I hope that that's the date. So, because I, I think we need to kind of start moving. So what is that session going to look like? I mean, is there going to, I'd like to make sure that something concrete. I mean, I'm hesitant to provide direction to you until we have that meeting, but I'd like to, after that meeting, really be able to, so. And I've never like been in one of those before, so what is that going to look like? And we'll be able to come to some kind of decision afterwards.
I didn't know if the vice mayor wanted to start off, so, okay. We have been starting conversations with the vice mayor around the structure of that meeting and meeting with our engagement consultant coming up to kind of finalize. But the intent is to come out of that meeting with a roadmap that the Planning Commission is comfortable with, the council is comfortable with, and the community has fully understands and knows where they can plug into that process. And I think that is one of the big goals of that study session. Spoiler alert, I don't think it's going to be on July 12th. I think the mayor was going to speak to that. I think we've got several conflicts in terms of attendance at that meeting on that date, so we will be looking for new dates just as of yesterday morning, for sure, so.
Yeah, because I think everybody just really wants to know, like, what's coming next and where the direction is going. I mean, that's just the feedback I've been getting over and over and over, so I'm just really eager to have that meeting so we can move forward.
Yeah, I don't know how, it's just since yesterday morning. I mean, several weeks ago, I told staff that I was not going to be available that day. So if you needed a quorum, you'd have to change the date. So, yeah, just a heads up on that. Doesn't sound like you got the communication.
So, yeah, what I'm hearing is that we want to, we want to get maximum participation, council and Planning Commission, and we want it as soon as possible.
As long as it doesn't interfere with one of my concerts.
Yes.
Yeah, that's too bad. I know people were really excited about that date. It's a bummer that we have to change it, so kind of last minute here. But a couple of things I just wanted to add, because I just kind of have an ongoing list here. I mean, I guess now is the chance, I guess, in a public forum to begin to, you know, not necessarily give direction, but kind of just state a lot of the stuff that I've been hearing and thinking about, just because, you know, I, I think it is, from what I've, I've seen and what I've listened to, that the Planning Commission is a little bit divided on, on some of these issues as well. And so I think getting us all in the same room to be able to sit down and say, look, you know, what does a ministerial pathway look like? And if we don't do this, what will the state do? And how do we interact with the state on these levels, you know, for our housing element? And what will it prevent us from future grant funding for projects, everything like that? And to really sit down and, you know, like you were saying, yeah, you're not going to direct them to make a form-based code if we later decide we don't want a form-based code, you know, to really be sure that we're not throwing ideas out and frivolously spending money on having people do them and then wasting that time. But I would add that I really think, you know, I hope that we can, as soon as possible, get another study session planned, hopefully, you know, before we're too into August or anything like that, and to really hopefully have a second study session, you know, sometime in, you know, September, October, sometime in the early fall. Because what I really, you know, some of the issues that people want to talk about are like big things that are going to take a long time to talk about, looking at, you know, I think, actually, number one on my list is building height, but that is probably a pretty easy one to discuss. But again, bringing those things in, like solar shading and modeling, and what setbacks look like, and how does that affect, you know, how tall something is. And I know that it's going to be a pretty deep conversation to look at infrastructure and talk about wastewater treatment and, you know, really dig into that so everybody can be on the same level and understand, and look at deeper things with that, too, like sea level rise and how that impacts what we're doing in the gateway and everything like that. And then streets and trails as well. You know, I think there could be a study session on almost each one of those things to really, you know, dig into that. And then community amenities would be like the last thing I would add to that list, just of, you know, things that I think would take a long time to talk about, but could be very beneficial to have, you know, the way in of everybody kind of in the same room to, to lead us, you know, to a point that the Planning Commission and the council feel really good about going forward. And just, yeah, so we're all on the same page with that. Just kidding. And parking, yeah. Parking. That fit, that fits with streets and trails and where do you put the cars and where do you put the bikes and where do you put the people? But, yeah, and just looking, that's, that's all I got for now on that list, but, yeah, thank you.
I did want to mention, Vice Mayor, to the point that you made earlier about the, the design work. I know that, you know, many in the community are, you know, anxiously awaiting, you know, some of this 3D modeling and, you know, what the solar shading looks like and that sort of thing. You know, the, the GHD team, who's subcontracting to Plan West, had a fairly early deliverable, I believe it was February, for 3D GIS modeling, and we were anxious and, you know, excited about sharing that with the, the community in March is what we were anticipating. And what my expectations of what 3D modeling would be and what, you know, what GHD's understanding of what 3D modeling would be were radically different. So they, they were basically able to create in that first version, you know, the, taking the standards and then creating what they call a jewel box or a glass box, so it would just give you the, the maximum development framework. And it really did not convey the discussion that we'd been having with the community around, you know, upper-floor setbacks and this sort of thing. And so we had to delay releasing that information because people would take a look at that. You don't get a second chance for a first impression. They would take a look at that and say, hey, look, you know, this is completely inconsistent with what you're, what you're proposing, and they would be right. So we've been working and adding, you know, refinements. And the work that we're scheduling to come out, the 29th, that Delo had mentioned earlier, our consultant Ben Noble, who's going to do sort of the first phase of this design work with the community, is intended to really describe, you know, what a form-based code is and how it's used, and to dig a little bit into the detail around, you know, you know, how building form can be regulated, how you can have larger stature buildings and still have it be, you know, pedestrian-friendly, human-scale. The second phase is going to be more detailed design work, community design work with the, with the community, to try and pull together information. So the first one is a little bit more informational and question answering. The second one will be more, you know, roll up our sleeves and get into the details. And we've used, we've gotten to the point now where we have a local architect who's assisting with some of the images that you can transition from the 3D GIS modeling to a visual, you know, drawing sketch of what the streetscape might look like, which, you know, conveys a lot more effectively what it is that the streetscape might look like than that first product we got in February. So that's been part of what the delay is, is that we've, we've had to continuously refine that work product and make sure that it's going to convey information to the community that they can digest and understand. So looking forward to having that, you know, roll out over July and August.
Let me add some more questions. Is the Gateway Plan on budget?
Is the Gateway Plan on budget?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're, we're on budget. We still have, as I mentioned earlier, about a $300,000 gap that we're trying to fill to get us to a point where, you know, we feel we'd have a, you know, much better work product than we're going to get if we have to operate within our, our current constraints. But so far, yeah, we're not over budget.
And what, what are the actual grant deadlines?
I mean, you might be able to go through them on your head, but we did have them in a staff report two meetings ago, and I'd be happy to send that back out to all the council.
That'd be great. What happens to the Creamery District under the gap?
The existing zoning from the Creamery District would be replaced by the Gateway Area. The Creamery District itself would still be recognized and identified, just like many of the neighborhoods in, in our community are identified. So, so, yeah, nothing technically happens to the Creamery District. The, the zoning is more flexible than the existing zoning in the, the Creamery District right now.
Is it mentioned in the gap, Creamery District?
Multiple times, yeah. It's kind of-
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
The wastewater treatment plant. You know, I've always felt like that's, should be the conversation we should be having before this one. And I know that just today, it looks like we got blue-foldered, a document entitled "City of Arcata: Wastewater and Water Infrastructure Planning: Frequently Asked Questions." And in it, it says that after, let me see, Phase Two incorporated a 20% growth factor equating to a population of 22,410. So that's about 3,000 to 4,000 more people than we have now in the city, right?
Yeah, and, you know, again, Emily and Nature are here to, to support with any technical questions, and I believe there's a full presentation on the wastewater treatment plant coming up. What I'll say about, you know, the blue folder item that you got and the information that you'll receive in the next presentation is that that is based on Phase One and Two. That Phase One and Two is really intended to manage our existing, you know, capacity needs. What the general plan update is doing is projecting out, you know, into the future and looking at new population projections. And there would have to be, if you want to think of it this way, a Phase Three associated with wastewater treatment. And that Phase Three could range anywhere from, you know, relocating the plant, depending on what happens with sea level rise, to, you know, near-term enhancements at the existing location, a range of other options.
So this says that I think Phase Two is, is it good through 2055? Does that sound right?
Uh, yeah.
So we're saying that, you know, if we're going to go with Phase Two for that long, we're only going to be able to grow by 4,000 people. And everyone keeps talking about what a long-term process the plan is going to be, and all the growth isn't going to happen immediately, it's going to happen slowly over time. And I know we've had a really thorough conversation about the wastewater treatment plant. There's essentially nowhere to move it. You know, I don't think there's any technologies that are going to expand its capacity. So I just, I don't understand why we're planning for more than 4,000 people.
I think the Phase Two, and again, I'll lean on my colleagues to describe the technical detail, but the Phase Two discussion, the, the way that the capacity was translated into a population base was used as a, a means of trying to convey what the design capacity for Phase Two is. The work that we're doing now, the long-range planning work that we're doing now, and the, the population estimates that'll be incorporated into that work may necessitate a Phase Three. It may also be that despite the fact- a Phase Three. It may also be that despite the fact that the treatment plant, plan that we have now, based a 20% growth rate and, you know, which equated to a population, it's possible that that, that capacity, the actual capacity, for a variety of different reasons, would be much higher than that 20% population number that's included there. So there's, there's a lot of potential options for improvements to the wastewater treatment facility. We do a facilities plan and, you know, review the capacity on a periodic basis. And if we anticipated that, you know, it could handle 4,000 more people, and in five years we find that with 4,000 more people that it has additional capacity, then no new Phase Three would need to be done once you get to, you know, 4,001. If it turns out that in, you know, five years, that 4,000 that we had in growth, if we get it, consumes all of the existing capacity in the treatment plant, then that would trigger a Phase Three. And that Phase Three would be dependent on many other factors that we'd have to evaluate at that time, what the, what the actual improvements would be to ensure that we, you know, manage our effluent.
So this document also goes on to say that "Design of Phase Two of the Wastewater Treatment Facility Upgrade Project is currently on hold at the request of the State Water Board." The State Water Board has requested that the city explore additional opportunities for long-range planning for the treatment plant, and has provided technical assistance for feasibility study, which will examine various things. So we're not even able to do Phase Two right now, right? I mean, it just doesn't look good for us. And we've been having these same conversations for years. You know, again, we can talk about a Phase Three, it just seems really unrealistic.
Yes, I was just gonna, oh, go ahead, Emily, but I was just going to mention, so the blue folder item is that on your agenda tonight, we do have an update on infrastructure as a staff report.
Sure. Since this is a major component
Yeah.
of the Gateway Project, I thought it was appropriate to bring it up right now.
Okay.
Emily, could you, you kind of go over, because I thought it was really helpful when I took my tour, just kind of, you guys laid out the possibility of, we're doing this, and this newer, better technology is going to increase capacity, and also the possibility of the addition of other elements, such as like the oxidation ditches and everything like that. It really actually, that tour made me feel pretty, pretty comfortable in increased capacity, at least in the, you know, how long that equipment is going to be good for. So, yeah, if you could go over that, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll just add really quick, you canceled my tour, so I didn't get any of that information. So if I could get something in writing, like
I'm only going to speak now.
Like a written report, if I could get something in writing, because the staff report doesn't have anything in writing, right? There's nothing on the agenda. So that'd be great if I could get some documentation on it, I'd appreciate it.
Hello, Vice Mayor, Council members. I have a, we have a presentation on this particular topic that touches on what is, you know, the components of Phase One, what is what the city has envisioned for Phase Two, what are we doing to plan for future capacity as a potential Phase Three, and that also includes real data that we can look at. So I'm at your discretion, I'm happy to go into that presentation now. That would be a change on the agenda, but I just welcome your guidance for how to proceed.
Yeah. Well, I think what we've all really indicated, I think the purpose of this time is, you know, kind of what direction we want to go, and what things we want to see and discuss in our study sessions with the Planning Commission, and what we want the public to engage on. So I think we've kind of decided infrastructure is a big point that we want to engage on and have you come back to us with, and especially if you're going to be giving this presentation later. I think that, you know, we're going to be getting a lot of that information tonight even. So I would say that maybe now is the time to open it up for public comment, because we have so many people patiently waiting here to talk on this item.
Yeah, and I think my point was that this conversation is completely pointless and a waste of everyone's time when there's no viable options to provide wastewater treatment to the project. So that's my point.
Great. Let's open up to public comment. And I heard David said there is, and Emily nodded in agreement. So I think we're going to find out about all of that later when we have some staff reports. So let's open it up for public comment. If you are here in person and would like to speak, please make your way to the podium if you would like to speak on the general plan engagement report.
Hello, Arcata City Council members. My name is Gerardo Hernandez. I am a student at Cal Poly Humboldt. I've been fortunate enough in getting to know the city of Arcata for almost a year now, and currently I'm a local policy intern for the North Coast Environmental Center, analyzing Arcata's Gateway Area Plan. I am here today to say that I appreciate the utmost transparency regarding the city's reading zoning plans, especially in regards with the Gateway Area. It is important to continue this dialogue and move forward to implement this plan into reality soon. Data from the 2020 U.S. Census has an estimate of 34.5% of Arcata residents living in poverty. This Gateway Area Plan can create more equitable housing, which will be a substantial solution to tackle Arcata's housing crisis, and help build more housing units to generate affordable housing to the residents of Arcata. Cal Poly Humboldt is looking to increase their student enrollment by 50% within three years, and this will create a high demand for more housing availability in Arcata. In a 2018 California State University statewide study, it was discovered that 19% of Humboldt University students reported being housing insecure at least once in those last 12 months in that study. This plan will facilitate building more housing units and can help these students with having more housing security. The Gateway Area Plan also can offer residents more choices to have alternative transportation with biking infrastructure, or even just getting by in Arcata without a car by concentrating development at a simple walking distance. With all of this to consider, overall, this plan can help the environment in Arcata by reducing the amount of greenhouse gas emissions by vehicles and protecting natural, natural resources. I hope you may move ahead in the process to eventually implement this plan in the future, and also to strongly consider the input that residents and renters continue to offer to you, because it helps the betterment of Arcata as a whole. The public engagement report shows that the outreach process has a, has far exceeded the minimums required by law, and that city staff have made a prolonged effort at broad engagement, and that by and large, Arcadians support the priorities laid out in the general plan update, particularly infill development, alternative transportation, and protection of green space. Please continue moving forward with the review process so that we can implement these zoning changes and start the process of building much-needed housing in a timely fashion. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Quinn Warder. Just to clarify, Vice Mayor, you said that we're having oral public commentary on the considered draft, excuse me, considered draft general plan engagement report. Is that correct? Just on that?
We are on Item B, so if you have a public comment related to the draft general plan engagement report and general plan update review process, now is the time to make that comment. Yeah.
And I would say the Gateway Plan's included in that, so it's fair game.
Originally, you did not say the general plan update review process.
Sorry, my bad. I was not looking at the agenda. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherry Starr. I am a local tenant and would love to own a home in Arcata, and I am in favor of infill and thoughtful planning. Regarding the draft SIRP, Community Engagement Report, I understand the challenge of collating and making sense of the large volume of community feedback given. I understand the draft report's executive summary is a work in progress, Page 165 of the Agenda Packet. The summary states, "Some members of the public had concerns, but feedback on some items shows a lot more than some. It shows overwhelming concern." I reviewed the "What Have We Heard So Far" poster in detail. That's on Page 263 of the Agenda. There were numerous responses written on sticky notes on most of the posters. These responses should be recorded. For example, on that poster alone, 18 people used stickies to voice support for three- or four-story buildings, and there was only one person in support of buildings three stories or more. Raw data from the open house should be posted so we can all review it and draw our own conclusions. It should not solely be interpreted in a summary. Feedback was given with dots placed on the posters. At the event, a verbal explanation was given that the dots of all colors indicate approval. An explanation of this, or a reminder, should be added to the report. Although, some of the dots were written on. For example, this image from the "Arcata's Future Multi-Family Housing Developments" should look more like this poster. That's on Page 259 of the Packet. The image of this black-and-white eight-story building has 10 dots, but they all have written messages on them, "No, no, no, ugly", ew, and has two other written comments as well. So a clarification of that would be good. Also, in the Agenda Packet tonight, there are high-quality, high-resolution photos of all of the posters from that open house. Those photos don't currently exist in the draft report that's posted on the city website, so suggest adding that, too. And thank you very much.
I'm Scott McBane again. I wanted to follow up on some of Sherry's points, but I'm a business owner adjacent to the Gateway Area Plan, and I'm very excited and cautiously hopeful and optimistic about getting a high-quality Gateway Plan that will really help build a strong and healthy community for Arcata. So I just want to kind of reaffirm the commitment to a successful, high-quality Gateway Plan, not just a plan. One of the things that you need is objective, quantitative, quality, transparent information from the community on key issues for the Gateway Plan. And some of the things that Ms. Starr brought up make it kind of hard to get that in a quantitative way. And it's really important for you to make, for making decisions, given the scale, the scope, and the potential permanence transformation of the city with the Gateway Plan. This isn't something that we can go back and go, oops, we messed this up. And we really need to focus on a few of the key issues. And one of the nice things with the engagement report is that it does, it's qualitative for the most part, but it does bring a lot of information together. And it helps us focus on, like, what are those key issues? And I think we know a lot of them. We keep using the building height as an example. The ministerial approval is another one, obviously. And more fundamentally is how do we get good mixed-use infill of housing and businesses that builds this healthy community for our next generation of Arcadians that we strive for? And I think to get this, we need to get better quantitative information from the community on this, including those disadvantaged components that we talked about earlier. So I'd like the Council to consider hiring an expert that can do this, that can do a survey and do that outreach, to get more quantitative information, but focused on what we've learned from the engagement report. I think it would be really helpful. The two sources of information that we currently have for the Gateway Plan is the two-day open house that was held in January. The other is the survey that we did as part of the RGA that focused on trying to ask some of these, these important questions and get very specific answers for those. But both of those aren't scientific representative polls or surveys that we need, so that's why I suggest that we use the engagement report as a, as a tiering to then do a quick, but scientifically defensible, survey of those key issues. This was done by the city back in 2020, you may remember, where the city contracted with, with a consultant to do this for the Open Spikes and Spaces and Parks Ballot Measure A. And I think that was done over a seven-day period, and really helped the Council get in information from the community members and helped you guys move forward, making decisions on putting that on the ballot. So I'd encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Hello, Chris Richards again. A little bit tall there. Okay, so what I have is the finished analysis of the public participation during the agendized discussion of Arcata's Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program, SERP, at formal, open government meetings. And this analysis is prior to the Gateway release, which would be, you know, December 1st. So the findings, this analysis focuses on formal, open government, public meetings held prior to 12/12/21. Each meeting identifies the agenda item title and the number of public speakers that gave oral public comments for that agenda item during each meeting. This analysis does not include the two special meeting walking tours held on 9/14/21 and 9/21/21. All analysis is based on adopted meeting minutes, video and/or audio recordings, unless otherwise indicated. As of 6/17/22, staff has provided five publicly available resources, which lists the dates of all its public engagement efforts. Those five resources were used as references for this public engagement analysis. For unknown reasons, no formal meeting dates for the year of 2020 were provided within the resources, therefore, the information from that year is excluded. In summary, a total of 20 formal, open government, public meetings and agendized discussion about Arcata's Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program were held in 2019 and 2021. It's not flattering for the city's efforts and for the community's involvement, but four Planning Commission meetings, total of zero public speakers, five City Council meetings, total of two public speakers, three study session meetings, total of three public speakers, one each, for each meeting, eight City Committee meetings, one public comment was provided during each meeting, from a total of three different public members. Like I say, it's, it's not flattering. I, I brought copies of this for you guys, and I can also follow up with a PDF file. There's six, so I think you've got it now for everybody. And I'll follow up with a PDF file so you have a digital. And I think this would be a great thing to add with the engagement files, so people really get an idea of how you guys tried and nobody showed up. And, but, you know, the good news is you have engagement now. People are engaged in wanting to help, and, you know, it's coming from all directions. So anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, anybody else in person? Hello, yes.
City of Arcata Council, Vice Mayor, our city manager, and team here, representing greater Humboldt County, and the wisdom of the well-above-average quality of life that I, Steve Davis, the firstborn son of Ralph and Joanne Davis, this year, 2022, I honor my parents and the passing of my father on January 3rd, 2022, with his long-term service as the first dentist of McKinleyville. And I honor my mother, who, to this very hour, continues her best service to my family and our community. Thank you so much for growing up here in Humboldt County, born in 1961, and raised here, my first memories here with Arcata McKinleyville Seventh Avenue Church here in Arcata, now coming tonight from the newer church on the hill in Bela Vista, McKinleyville. Humboldt County and the City of Arcata is back. May 1st, we had a May 1st celebration. We celebrated Mother's Day. We had the kinetic sculpture race start, and we celebrated Juneteenth on the 19th. And I have thoroughly enjoyed these times and moments of 2022. And I'm very hopeful that the Cal Poly Humboldt students will make sure that they have a place well in advance for their excellent studies, that they can continue here. I'm hopeful for the additional faculty homes that must be found and built and completed with the best of architecture and the best of builders, with the best of infrastructure on the most important thing for everyone, quality water to drink and cook and, and for personal hygiene, and then the right way that that water gets out of here. And the City of Arcata has one of the best world-class ways of making that to places where birds and, and people and the enjoyment of the fresh air and the sunshine and quality food that we have had here for decades. So, to honor our wietlands, our many people of faith, I am hopeful that today, when yesterday-
So to honor our real lands, our many people of faith, I am hopeful that today, when yesterday's news in the Time Standard said that two years have gone by--
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate your passion, but that is your three minutes.
Thank you so much.
We'll have another three minutes at the end if you hold out with us. But thank you for your comment.
Well, mental health challenges around the world, across the United States, and close to home here, with two years that Semper Viris has not been able to provide--
Okay, so thank you, that is your three minutes.
The step-down housing--
Sir, thank you. We will take our next speaker.
Considering as many creative and practical ways of making sure that our--
Okay, so we're going to take our next speaker. Joanne is waiting.
--housing and quality water.
Come on up, Joanne.
And thank you so much for a bachelor program that I want to be part of as a volunteer and--
Okay, so thank you, Steve. That is your three minutes. We're going to take the next person. Awesome. I love the passion. Okay, Joanne, you're up next. Thank you. You have three minutes.
Thanks. My name's Joanne McGary. Again, I reiterate, I'm a resident of Arcata. I am a tenant. I live in the Creamery District. I have been involved in a lot of planning issues around the Creamery District and then initial stages of what became known as the Gateway Plan. I have attended some of the tours and the open houses. I've tried to be involved in -- with the rest of the community on social media. I've actually been blocked, so I haven't been able to see or participate in any of those kinds of discussions. I totally appreciate Fred's ArcataOne.com so that I can actually see what other people are doing and saying. But I do have a commitment to this neighborhood particularly and the general plan of our community overall. I am not going to speak anymore about this particular issue, but just know that there are people out there beyond me and beyond those who are sitting here who really care about how this place is going to look and be and how we're going to live in the future. And I really do think you should look at Sorrel Place. You all had a tour of it when it first opened up. I think it's worthwhile to go back and visit. If that's the model of what future housing will be, it's important for us to check in on that type of housing, to see how it will work for us or not. So I do recommend that the council go back to Sorrel Place and take another visit and see how things are going. So thank you.
Thank you. Normally, I like to speak with facts. Tonight, I'm going to speak from my heart as well as the facts. I'm infuriated, okay? I believe that David Loy is gaslighting you and taking advantage of an inexperienced city council. I didn't think I was going to say that, but here I am. He has outlined two choices. There are other choices as well, as he knows. The planning commission, maybe he's misinterpreted what they've asked for. That is not what they've asked for, in my opinion. I've been listening to the -- going to the meetings. I have transcripts on ArcataOne.com. There's a 13-minute segment you can listen to. There's a 45-minute segment of the previous meeting. The planning commission has been asking for information from David Loy for months. He has actually refused to provide it. They have three upcoming sessions on design. They've been asked for the form-based code. My question is, how do you evaluate the design of buildings without the code that specifies the design of the buildings? This has been going on for months. I'm sorry to be so excited, but it infuriates me. This is from the draft plan, page 23. It shows one sample of 3D modeling, so we know that it exists. Other than that, to say that -- David, you gave us the same speech two weeks ago of the reason for the delay. It started in February. That was four months ago. I think that it could be provided by now. The Vice Mayor, you mentioned solar shading. On this website, there's a word cloud. I put it up kind of as a humorous thing. There's 28,000 words in the draft plan. There's not one instance of solar shading. There's also not one instance of house or home. We're expected to have opportunities, but not houses. We have housing units, okay? David, you referred to Table 1. There's no Table 1, I think. I'll mention I had an ex parte communication with the mayor and with Councilmember Matthews. There's a phrase that David uses in this thing, which is "time's certain." I request that the city attorney explain what that is, and I asked that David explain why he used it. This plan that he has devised is more efficient. It's more efficient for him. It is not what the planning commission wants. They have vast experience. The Vice Mayor teaches this. I understand people can have different opinions, and I look forward to the study session. But he is definitely misleading you. Thank you. Or I should say, attempting to mislead you.
Okay, do we have any more in-person public comment? Last call for in-person. Actually, I think everybody here has spoken, so, okay, we'll go to online public comment.
All right. Our first public comment is Jane. Go ahead, Jane. Can you unmute yourself, Jane?
Sorry.
There you go.
Hope that doesn't count in my three minutes. Okay. Staff has expended much time and energy reaching out to the public in good faith in a wide variety of ways to present information on the proposed land use plan and its various elements. The resulting engagement report presents a great compilation of ideas from the public based on that long series of public engagement activities, including a visioning survey. However, these outreach activities do not provide hard and representative data on controversial issues such as desired building heights and density and ministerial view -- I'm sorry, ministerial review versus council and planning commission review and oversight, or desired types of housing, that is, like rental versus owner-occupied, apartments versus condos, townhouses, et cetera. The information collected is too generic. It is visionary, and the city council and public would be better informed if a quantitative, gateway-specific survey of the community would be conducted on those controversial issues. The city's visionary survey was conducted mostly in 2021, prior to publication of the draft gateway plan on December 1st, 2021. You can extrapolate preferences for Four Stories or West, for example, but the sample is not representative of the public. We can't identify, for example, what the current residents of the Gateway area think of the proposed gateway plan, or whether they are interested in selling or upzoning their own properties to enable the proposed high-density residential development proposed. As I mentioned above, we still don't have the draft form-based code to enable discussion of the specifics of the proposed gateway plan. And I'm going to go back to, you know, much of the engagement involved making informational presentations with less or sometimes no emphasis on data collection relevant to specific issues of concern. It would be highly desirable to create a citizens advisory group or task force to assist in surveying the public, or possibility with a consultant, but this would cost less, because that's what was done with the Plaza Improvement Task Force to address the addition of additional issues presented by the draft gateway plan released December 1, 2021, and provide supportive assistance to our overstretched staff who are attempting to consolidate way too much into too short a time period when extensions of grant funding deadlines are likely feasible. And please direct staff to resolve the grant deadline issues and request extensions. I sent you prior to this a detailed list of the information I think we need about each of these grants. What is the grant? What is the beginning date? When is the ending date? Does it provide for an extension? How much funding is engaged? What happens, you know, if we don't make the deadline? I know I've seen two of them--
So Jane, that is your three minutes.
--and those provided for extension.
Jane, that is your three minutes, but we do have your written comments here in front of us, and thank you for sending those in to us. And yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I thank you all for reading them and addressing them, and I thank Karen for distributing them, because I caught up with her at about 5:00 after 5:00 today. Thanks.
Okay, well, we got it. Okay, so next person online.
Our next speaker is Pat. Go ahead, Pat.
Hi, Pat Carr, Arcata resident. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I have really appreciated the efforts of the city to get information on people's interests and perspectives for the future of Arcata, for the gateway plan specifically. I think that planning is just a hugely challenging task for any place, but, you know, particularly here in Arcata, we have no idea exactly what Arcata will look like or what kinds of pressures will be brought to bear in the next, you know, 10 or 15 years. But we do know a few things about what Arcata is going to face. Much like we have been experiencing currently, we're almost certainly going to be facing more and more need for housing. We are already facing a housing crisis, a lack of places for people to rent. Students will be coming to CPH over the next few months, coming very soon, a real lack of availability of housing that's affordable for people to purchase. Even people at a fairly high income level face a very challenging time in purchasing a house in Arcata now. And those things are not likely to change, and it really amounts to a crisis that we face in Arcata now. And the climate crisis, we know, will continue to become even more severe than it is now. I think that it's really imperative that the city move as rapidly as possible, as rapidly as humanly possible, in order to develop housing for people in an infill fashion. And that the engagement efforts that we've seen so far, I think, really deserve to be applauded. So I appreciate your seeking input from people tonight on this question, and wish you luck.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, next speaker.
No more public comment.
Okay, there is no more public comment. Okay, any last-minute comments from staff, from council, or we can maybe finally move on to new business?
Not yet. I've got some more questions. So one thing I wanted to mention is, starting on packet page 230, I think for 39 pages, there's a lot of images of, I think, a town hall or an open house, I guess, that were taken with sticky notes and colored dots. And my entire packet's in black and white. I don't know about you guys, so I can't see any of that. It's also really blurry, so I can't really read it. And--
Didn't Delo say that those are going to be uploaded as an appendancy to the -- on the Strategic Infill website? Because that was one of the -- yeah, the thing I asked. I wanted to zoom in, but--
So that sounds really nice, but the council and the staff have decided that I can't use a computer right now, so I have no way to access this information.
The public library has computers.
That's a great response.
It's a fact.
And then, you know, this Arcata One website, I feel like, has really turned into kind of the definitive authority on what's going on with the gateway program. So I really recommend people take a look at it. And there were, you know, some concerning -- there's a report that was put out on it and some things in there were concerning to me, just kind of regarding David's conduct of the planning commission meetings. It describes an unwillingness or inability to answer the planning commissioners' questions at time, even basic questions, and providing responses that are divisionary or not related to the original question. Insistence that this process must be what is followed, even though the knowledge and experience of the commissioners indicates that other processes are not possible but considerably more desirable and effective. Time and time again, saying one thing at one moment and another thing often is opposite at another time. This is a regular pattern that we are seeing across the board in items at the smallest and the largest levels. Not being willing to provide information that the commission has told him is necessary for them to continue their evaluations. Again, is the May 24th meeting and several meetings prior to that, by putting off requests from the commissioners for what they have told them is needed, and essentially dismisses the commission and reduces their ability to do their job. And the large example is, of course, his refusal to provide any form-based code. So, you know, also, I watched the May 24th meeting with the planning commission, and it, you know, really seemed like a reasonable person would come to the conclusion that you had ignored planning commission requests for certain agenda items and put your own agenda items on there instead.
Okay, so I don't think this is relevant to the item that we're discussing right now.
It actually is.
I really think that you're just berating staff.
No, you need to stop interrupting me, Sarah, and turn your microphone off. You need to stop interrupting me, both of you do. It's my first amendment right to say what I want to say.
Okay, well, maybe try saying it with a little bit more decorum.
Sure. Okay. Thank you for sharing your opinions. It's all facts. You can go watch the videos. So, you know, reading this makes me sick to my stomach, and it's sickening to see this culture of lies and deception cultivated by leadership continue to thrive at City Hall. It's been like this for years, and it needs to stop. We need to clean up City Hall and give the people the transparent government they deserve. And I'm looking at two staff members right now that I have lying on video to the city council.
I'd like to make a motion to move on to new business.
The council, yeah, you're not going to get the votes.
Hee-hee-hee-hee! Oh, my God! I'll second it, whatever.
You know, you're both witnesses to Nancy Diamond lying, and I have a witness showing that Assistant City Manager lies as well.
This is totally inappropriate.
I'm done now.
I just don't understand what the end game for this is. Great, let's get the mayor back here and move on to new business, please.
And for the record, none of that was denied by any staff members.
So I was -- I'm just -- I've been watching the clock and just kind of wondering, this is, like, where we are, you know, with the time and the agenda. This is my first time for having a meeting that's gone this long. I think that there's--
I'm just warping up. I'm ready to go.
Well, I mean, I think that we have a--
I finally don't have work tomorrow, so let's do it.
Yeah, I've been out of my house since 7:30. I haven't seen my kids today, but let's get through this tonight, because I don't want to come back to this.
Well, okay, we'll just hold on one sec. I think that we do have, like, a policy and procedures for a time. Is that correct? I mean, I'm just checking in. I feel like at 9:30, we're not supposed to go on to a--
10:30.
Oh, it's 10:30.
Yeah, I want to adjourn that. And so, yeah.
It says that if we don't complete by 10:30, we can either move to the following Thursday at 6:00 PM or decide to continue on. And then, you know, if things require public comment, we have to have a unanimous vote to move on, basically.
We need to approve a budget tonight, though, don't we?
Yes, that would be good.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're handling everything the way we're supposed to. So just give me one second to get all my papers in order here. All right, so we are moving on to new business. Where the heck is that page? Okay, so we are moving on to the city budget, and maybe please have a staff report.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight, I will be presenting a continuation of our June 7 budget meeting for fiscal year 22/23 budget. I'm Andrea Sargevsky, Finance Director here at the City of Arcata. So just a high level, there are some changes. The presentation is mostly highlighting changes from the last meeting. We'll start off with the fee schedule. We'll go into appropriations limit, then some budget updates, and then a recommendation. Overall, the recommendation before you tonight also includes our typical master fee schedule public hearing and also our appropriations limit public hearing. So for the master fee schedule, on packet page 313, we have a slight change from our last meeting. There is a correction related to our transit passenger fares for Dial-A-Ride program. Instead of listing the fees at $21 for six rides, the fee is now been -- has been corrected to a decrease of $18 for six rides or $3 a ride. And then for our appropriations limit, this is on packet -- or starting on packet page 322. Typically, the appropriations limit is included as part of the budget adoption resolution for the next fiscal year. This year, we are also including the requirement for the public hearing for this. And behind that is review of the documentation for how we have calculated the appropriations limit. So to kind of give you a little bit of history, within California, Proposition 4 was established back in 1979, and that basically set a total annual appropriation-- annual appropriations limit for each local government for an amount that each entity could not exceed in a given fiscal year, based off of adjustments for change in cost of living and for change in population. So basically, the goal of the appropriations limit is to keep the per-person government spending within a, a inflation factor included or adjustment pretty much at 1978 or 1979 levels. So on the slide before you, there's two different factors that we've included. One is a population increase percentage of 2.42%, and that is provided as a factor from the Department of Finance for the state of California. Then there's also an inflation factor for the change in California per capita personal income of 7.55%, and that is also provided by the Department of Finance. So basically, taking those two numbers, 1.2, 1.7, multiplying them together, we arrive at a total adjustment factor of 1.10. And basically, where we started is looking at the appropriations limit for the prior fiscal year of 16.6 million, applying the adjustment for the increase, and then looking at where we land for fiscal year 2023 at that $18.3 million. And once again, the two different factors that we choose are included in the overall budget resolution for fiscal year 2223. So then, high level, just walking through budget updates from our last meeting, there are several items I want to highlight, one, starting with bank service charges. So on the slide before you, we have offsetting revenues and expenditures for General Fund related to additional bank service charges, and this came about just by doing a very thorough review of the overall budget document before it comes to council for budget adoption. So for General Fund, there's no net change. There's $40,000 in increased revenue, offsetting additional $40,000 in expenditures. For Water and Wastewater, adjustments for bank service charges, we are increasing expenditures, but we do not have offsetting revenues for both of those funds to cover. I believe for the wastewater fund, we have enough revenue to offset, where we don't need to dip into reserves for next year, but this bank service charge would lead to additional dipping into water reserves to be able to fund the additional costs before you. And I've tried to group like-kind items together for the changes that are in your budget packet. So, two items that were brought up earlier on consent tonight for changes to the proposed budget document include our countywide slurry project, where we are increasing revenues and expenditures, as we will be receiving revenues from the partnering agencies for the slurry project, and we do have increased expenditures to include in the budget for that same slurry project of about $536,000 that we will be including. What was already in the budget for the June 7th meeting included Arcata's portion, along with the contingency factor. This is to increase the budget to cover the cost for the other partnering agencies and the revenues that we'd be generating to offset those project costs. We also are including for additional adjustments related to the radio project that was on consent tonight. So we're including revenues from Fund 221, the Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund. There's $200,000 that have been dedicated as part of that radio project, where the revenues are going to be transferred over to General Fund, and General Fund is where the capital expenditure will lie for a portion of that project. And then the last, I guess, major piece for budget updates, we, and going back through budget, realized that there was a line item for Redwood Park Design for the IIG grant that was miscoded to one of the ARPA expenditure lines and being double-counted, so we removed that, the $38,000. We also went back to include the recommendations from council for the ARPA funding from the last meeting, so $200,000 to Main Street, $4,500 to the Film Commission as far as support from ARPA on top of the amount that's being contributed from General Fund, $10,000 for Weat Tribe Support, and $25,000 as a recommended amount that we're including for Arcata Community Pool support. But of course, you have the ability to change these dollars, dollar amounts for allocation if you so choose tonight. One of the other items in connection with the, I guess, the items that were recommended for ARPA funding at the last meeting, I did send out a blue folder item today, where in reviewing the Arcata's ARPA project listing, the $4.4 million that is being allocated to, for various projects citywide, the amount should be 4.4 million, but the amount that was listed in your previous budget packet is, was 4.490, leading to the misrepresentation of what you had available and remaining to allocate. So what that means is, in your previous budget packet, I believe, starting on page 427, the amount that was stated remaining to allocate was about $78,000, but you only have about $7,000 in wiggle room remaining to allocate. So I will stop there to see if there are any questions before I go into my recommendation slide for tonight.
The only question I have is, on one side, this $200,000 said, "Arcata Main Street", and then on another side, it said, "Main Street Chamber Support". Which one is it?
Yes, so I believe the Main Street and Chamber Support was the description we used previously when we came to it the last meeting, but how it's budgeted in the budget that's coming before you for adoption tonight, it's $200,000 for Main Street.
Okay. Is there any way that we can add in Main Street Chamber Support? I, I feel like if they're kind of heading to... Do you want to say something before I go?
No, I think the reason that we originally had the title Main Street Chamber was because they did come forward with a three-year request, and that third year was going to be the combined Main Street Chamber. But when we reduced down to a two-year support, then we just, then it just went straight to Main Street. And really, I think the direction of the council, when, we've sort of two processes. One is you're allocating your ARPA funds, and then the other is what are you budgeting for this year? And I think what the council asked for is setting aside that $200,000, but funding that first $100,000 for Main Street, and making sure that, you know, you've reviewed their progress before you final, you would allocate the, another $100,000 next year, provided, you know, progress was made this year.
Yes.
So you would still have the chance to merge or to redirect that money?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, that that is the path forward and that we're, we're working, that's the understanding that we're working towards, so thank you.
And you certainly could provide that direction. As we finalize that scope of work for that $100,000 for Main Street, if the council would specifically like a task in there around researching and coming back with an update to the council on considering a merger with the Chamber, we certainly can add that into the scope of work, and that scope of work will also come back to you as well.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Well, and I, I think, too, part of that is there's still uncertainty, you know, as to whether or not that merger's going to happen, and so that's why we kind of took it back to the two years and then to kind of see where it's going from there.
Yeah, that looks great. I don't have any questions. Thank you, Andrea.
I had requested detailed information about the budget, and I'm just wondering why that was not provided to me.
I don't know if the mayor would like to address that, but at this point, it is my understanding that you've got communication between a new attorney that you've identified and the city's attorney.
I asked for this months ago, and Annette denied it. She denied my request. So this is months old. I've asked for detailed information on the budget for months. My numbers are cut off in my packet, so I can't even see what the budget numbers are. So there's, so there's no response.
Is this on? Okay, I believe it was explained to you that the information was not available when you asked for it, and that it would be given. Do not cut me off, please. Let me finish. It would be given to you when it would be available, and when it was available, it was given to all of the council members simultaneously, the information you had requested.
That's not true.
Well, the city manager is absolutely correct that your communications to city staff are through your attorney and who is communicating with our outside.
Sure, that wasn't the case several months ago, though. So you haven't answered my question. You can sit down, Nancy, it's okay.
No, I'm, I'm gonna, you, you don't tell me what to do. The whole council tells me what to do. And, and I just want to reiterate that you were given the information when it was available.
And why wasn't?
And it was made available to the entire council at the same time. I am...
Okay, well, where we are here and where we have been for months is that all communications have to go through attorneys. It's been that way through all of the iterations of the attorneys, and that's still where we are.
That's a lie, too. No, it hasn't. That's just a recent thing you started doing. So everybody's just lying.
Great, I think the budget looks awesome. I thought our study session was super helpful and wonderful, and I would like to make a motion to... Look at the right page.
Can, can I interrupt you just for one moment?
Oh, yeah, no, you're not done. I'm sorry.
I have one more slide I wanted to go over for recommendation. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so as far as recommendation, as we had walked through at the last council meeting, the estimate for our fiscal year end 2022, as we close out June 30th, is about 6.5 million. Based off of revenues, expenditures, we're estimating that we're going to add about $611,000 into General Fund reserves. So as part of the recommended motion for tonight, we are recommending that if we happen to have additional savings above that $611,000, that we're recommending to spend those additional dollars, not to exceed $617,000, on our radio replacement project. So we're recommending up to $542,000 to pay off that project implementation, and then also for our Terrace Ave road repair, $75,000 to complete that project.
Is that the sinkhole?
Yeah, and you received a public comment on that tonight.
Awesome, thank you.
And that neighborhood has been very patient in waiting for this repair.
Good. Um, well, before we go to public comment, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 223-02, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, updating the master fee schedule for the various fees and service changes for fiscal year 202223, and adopt Resolution Number 223-01, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Arcata, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2022, and should General Fund Reserves net revenues exceed the fiscal year 202122, estimates of $611,162, allocate any amount above that, up to 117,000, 600,000, seven, 617,000 maximum to fund both the city's radio replacement project and Terrace Ave new road repair.
I'll second.
So I'm going to assume that we're not done with the conversation.
I have one more question.
Okay, just one more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where did you hide money in the budget this year? This is for Karen. I know every year she likes to hide money in different accounts.
I suggested you move to public comment.
Okay, so I don't think she's going to answer that. So let's go ahead and go to public comment.
I appreciate your letting me come up here for three minutes every once in a while during this very long and interesting meeting. I am a little concerned about the change in the ARPA monies for Main Street, because when I was at the budget discussion, it was three years, $100,000 for, that would, let me, I, I thought it was $100,000 for three years, with the last year being a merger with Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce, the Arcata Chamber of Commerce, which I kind of liked the idea of supporting Main Street until it gets to that point where it hopefully will merge with the Chamber, because I just do think having two similar types of organizations coming together is an efficient kind of way. But then it just all of a sudden changed to $200,000, and I understand the explanation, but it just is sort of startling to hear when I'm thinking the budget's talking about $100,000 for three year, $100,000 each year for three years, and now it's $200,000, about $100,000 of the ARPA money this year being spent. So, anyway, change happens between meetings, and I, you know, that, that type of money, a lot of people in the community can benefit by. I just want to make sure that it's kind of clear how it's being spent and when, so, and for whom. So thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
City of Arcata, thy mayor, city manager, and our council, thank you so much. My first experience with a three-minute counter, with green lights, trying to manage diplomatic ways, and a very fine accounting report. If I heard correctly, I should be able to get an $18.6 ride pass. I'm assuming this is for the bus. City of Arcata, you're giving a discount during a time when gasoline prices have doubled and tripled, and some of us, especially senior citizens, are very concerned. Thank you. I'm very concerned about our best efforts of creatively managing the guests and people with long and wise counsel, where you have the most wonderful, above-average quality of life. So, in your budgets, to make sure, along with the $25,000 for our Arcata Community Pool, we can make sure every day, every person who's coming into the borders of the City of Arcata can get to a good cleansing contrast shower, and to manage food that is delivered to them if they don't have it, and then taking care of the garbage, and making sure that gentlemen and ladies in the City of Arcata, and with the hopefulness of us in the unincorporated place of McKinleville, if there is someone that is on a sidewalk and you see them, and they, it might be a Mr. or Ms. grunge, we have the Arcata Fire Department people that can get them to Betty Chin and Aha! cleansing contrast showers outside and inside, and manage our mental health challenges simply by wonderful water to drink and water to cook, and then personal hygiene guaranteed. So, this is dollars. This is not tens and thousands of dollars. This is every day that your ambassador program that I read over, and I'm still working with the very Reverend Sarah Potter and the Nazarenes of Arcata, and the Humboldt Unitarian Universe's fellowship to help you make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for your positivity. Do we have anyone else in person that would like to comment on the budget? Okay, seeing none, let's go to online.
All right, I'm going to say our only speaker is going to be Patrick. Go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, hello, I'm Patrick Swartz, Mayor Atkins Salazar, Vice Mayor Schaefer, and Council Members Matthews and Watson. Thank you for your service to our community here, and your patience tonight. It's commendable. I'm speaking to you on behalf of the North Humboldt Park and Recreation District, whose sole purpose is to oversee the Arcata Community Pool, and of which I serve as a board member there. And we're here to request funding from your ARPA, and I see you have us designated for 25 grand. And I don't know where that number came from. We're actually requesting 100 grand from that fund. And just to give you some backdrop, we're a special district, and as a special district, we weren't qualified for any PPP funding, or any EIDL funding, or really any other funding to help us weather the storm and overcome our closures and our shutdowns and our ability to kind of recover from the impact of COVID. So these ARPA funds are really designed to help overcome the impact of COVID, and the only source of funds we have to request from is from you guys, either through the state, the county, or the city, in these funds that were designated by the federal government as pass-through. So we respectfully request that you reconsider this 25 grand, increase it to 100 grand. We have plenty of need for it in terms of capital improvements. I think you've read my letter, and you've read my email, in terms of the pump and the HVAC system and whatnot. And also, I think you might be aware that Arcata Community Pool is really the only community pool in Humboldt County, and we provide a lot of services here to teach children and adults how to swim, rescue swimmer training, all kinds of things which you see in the email there. So I respectfully, respectfully request that you reconsider that 25 grand and increase it to 100 grand. It's a desperate need for the pool in terms of our recovery from COVID, and maybe you can reallocate some of that paving money. I see there was about 350 grand of... I see there was about 350 grand of paving, which I'm not sure how paving recovery is related to COVID recovery. But anyway, this is what we're requesting, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, so before we move on to the vote, I did just want to clarify one of the concerns, Joanne, that you brought up earlier in your public comment is when... This is just near and dear to my heart because I'm the one that brought it forward on behalf of Main Street. So the conversation at the study session was the $200,000, $100,000 per year, that's what we decided on primarily for an executive director and help getting Main Street back on their feet. It was one-time money, and then with the assumption that after that, they would be back on their feet, fully funded with the festivals and ready to move on. And then it's just gotten a little bit complicated because of the possibility of a merger, which we all do support and hope that that happens. But that was just clarification on the conversation from the way I recall it from last time, so.
And Monica laid it out really nicely in her presentation, and I'm sure Main Street would be happy to share that with you, just to kind of see what their general outline was because it was a great document that they put together.
I'd like to make a motion to increase the funding for the Arcata Community Pool.
Yeah, I think we do have to go to the second. I think Brett's right. We need to go to the second one, and I guess... Okay, well, we're going to address both of them. It's not a problem. So let's just go ahead and we'll address yours. So I guess my question is, there's a motion on the table to increase it to 100,000, and right now there's only $7,000 extra. So is there something that you'd like to suggest that we leave out?
Yeah, let's take it out of the reserves.
Okay, so do we have a second for that?
I mean, it's such a vital asset to the community. You know, how can you vote against it?
Okay, I'm not hearing a second on that. So we're going to go ahead and go to the other motion where we do have a motion and a second on... That was the recommended motion from our agenda. So let's go ahead and take a vote on that. All in favor? Aye.
No.
All right, so it passes three to one. Okay, so let's go ahead and move into accept... This is Item B in new business, accept the certification of the verification of sufficient signatures on the petition for the initiative to enact ordinance requiring that the earth flag is flown at the top of the flagpole for the November 2022 election ballot, either adopt the ordinance or refer it to the ballot for a vote, and determine if the city council wishes to file arguments. So we've got two choices. We can adopt it now. We can refer it to the ballot. If we are referring it to the ballot, then we need to decide if we want to make an argument or assign that to someone else. So open it up for discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt it now.
I'd like to make a motion to submit the ordinance to the voters of Arcata at the general municipal election to be held on November 8th, 2022.
I second that.
So any discussion on this item? I'll just start by saying I am in agreement with the first and the second just based on the feedback that we got from some of the veterans organizations. I mean, I think the concept. I understand where Mr. Miserv's coming from with, you know, we live on the earth and then the country and the state. But I'm not a veteran. I haven't put my life on the line for our country, and we did get some really serious pushback on this and concern from veterans organizations. So that's why I think it needs to go to the ballot for, you know, so that we can... I think this is bigger, a bigger issue than us.
I believe Mr. Miserv himself wants it to go on the ballot.
Well, you know, well, once we've got the motion, we have a motion and a second, so we'll open it up to public comment, and then everybody can speak on that. But I want to make sure that we're done with our council comments before we go on to public input.
Should we talk about Part Two at this point, about if we wanted to provide a rebuttal or if there's a community organization that's interested in doing that?
Why don't we just go to public input?
Okay, sounds good.
We can tackle that. So Dave, did you want to start public input?
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, you're right. I would like to see it go on to the ballot. I think that, you know, 1,381 people want to see it on the ballot. That's what they signed for. And also, I think, to me, this is something to increase awareness of the importance of the earth. And to do that, what we need to do also is for the people to embrace it. And although it would be fine if four people vote to fly the flag that way, I think it's much more impressive and makes a much more of a statement if the people of Arcata decide that. So I definitely support your motion to put it on the ballot in November. I also want to address the concerns of people who think that somehow this effort is disrespecting the American flag or disrespecting veterans. And that certainly is not the intention of it, and I think that it's perhaps being misinterpreted a bit. The original idea, the flag code, which is not enforceable, says that the American flag must fly at the top of flagpoles. At the time when that was written, the only other flags that could conceivably have flown at the top of flagpoles were the flags of other nations. In 1972, the Apollo 17 mission flew over the earth, and the astronauts took the picture, and that became the symbol of the earth for Earth Day. And I think that this is not another nation over the United States. This is nothing demeaning the United States in any way. This is merely saying that we live on planet earth and that we can't have a healthy nation unless we have a healthy earth. And the whole idea of this is to raise the awareness of people that we need to be paying attention to the health of the earth and not to nationalism. So I feel what these people are saying, and I'm sorry they feel that way, but it really is not the intention and is not the symbolism. Flags are symbols. And the idea of this is to change the symbolism and to say that the earth is our home, and we must have a healthy earth to have a healthy country. So please move forward with having it on the ballot in November, and I sincerely hope you don't feel like filing an argument against it, but that would be up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Hi, I go by Magretta when I carry my earth flag around town and when I speak before you with it in hand. I second what Dave Miserv has said about not disrespecting any other flags or anything like that in that when I walk around on the ground with this earth flag, I get nothing but positive comments because I think it reminds people that this is our ultimate home and that we've got to take care of it, and if we don't take care of it, we don't even have a country to be concerned about. I walk by the plaza. I look at the flagpole. I look at the American flag, which is much larger than the other flags on the flagpole. And I look that if we changed the order of the flags on the flagpole, the American flag would still stand out quite. In fact, it would be framed even more nicely between the earth and the state flags. And I think there's no disrespect or insult at all in that regard. And I kind of think of the Hollywood credit thing in the movies where you've got an Al Pacino and a Robert De Niro starring in the movie, and who gets top credit? And sometimes one name goes first, but the other second name comes out larger or in a different place. And so it's like a balance of priorities. And I think the size of our current American flag on that flagpole should remain and that the order of the flags on that flagpole will improve the visibility of the American flag and the visibility of the earth flag. So anyway, I'm glad that this is finally being discussed, and I hope it goes to the vote in November. And I hope all of us can realize, you know, what's really important in the world is all of us working together to live together in peace and in thrivability. And if we don't have an earth that can do that, we won't have a country where we can do that. So thank you for considering this, and peace on earth.
Thank you, Joanne.
Stars and stripes forever, being born and raised in the great state of California, seeing the earth flag right there when I walked in here for the first time in a long time, and knowing the voters have an equalizing vote here in the City of Arcata, where we in McKinleville, where the horses have the right of way and the lilies and the airplanes mix, where we were hoping to join you folks in an honorable president from the great state of Michigan. A quote, I don't have it memorized, but President McKinley does have special words about civilization that, after all of that, and our McKinley statue is sent back to the official McKinley Museum. I'm still hopeful for affordable housing in McKinleville. There's great land at the Obama-era federal courthouse that is ready for Humboldt County's best investment for those small houses. And it's just beautiful to think about that, plus a sculpture garden. And thank you for your consideration. I am the Matisse of sculptures, working with Chanel stems and inexpensively beautifying your Arcata possibility for budget consideration for sculptures and cheering on people and doing the best we can to take care of our planet first. We're in desperate situations, especially the great state of Arizona, where firefighting and desperate people. Where can we go to, Californians? Thank you so much for all we've invested in firefighting and keeping as many people safe and having places like our Humboldt County where the Red Cross and Pay It Forward Humboldt and city management can make sure people have drinking and cleansing, personal hygiene, water, and food however we can to continue our best stewardship of our votes and our dollars. Thank you very much. Hopefully, we in McKinleville will lead in developing quality housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in person that would like to speak on the issue of the ballot initiative for the flag? Okay, let's go ahead. Do we have anyone online?
No one online.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second for putting it on the ballot. So I think we should take that, and then we can just discuss as aside how we want to handle rebuttal, if any. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so discussions on the argument against?
I don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, I'm not passionate about creating that argument, but I talked to City Manager Deemer, and she indicated if there was a local organization that wanted to put out a rebuttal, they could submit that, correct? I don't know if our city clerk wants to take this, but yeah, would probably be best.
Any registered voter in Arcata can submit an argument or a bona fide association of citizens or a combination of the two.
When do they have to decide to do that?
The deadline for a primary argument is July 22nd, and the deadline for rebuttal arguments is August 2nd.
All right, August 2nd. Well, that's the second part. July 22nd. Yeah, and so I...
In the packet, it says July 20th for our meeting, right? But it has to be, so it would come to our meeting and then has to be submitted officially by that date.
If the council wanted to submit an argument, they would have to approve the language at an open meeting, which would be, your opportunity would be July 20th to make that July 22nd deadline.
Yeah. Well, and since it was Commander Sterling, I believe, from the VFW who reached out to me initially with some concerns about this, I did put in a phone call to him. I haven't heard back, but, you know, they might be interested in taking this up. So I think now that it's public, we'll probably get some input on that. Okay. All right, so next we have Adopt Resolution Number 212-72, Calling for a General Municipal Election to be held November 8th, 2022, and Consider Appointing a Subcommittee to Draft Arguments in Favor of the Utility Users Tax Measure. Could we have a staff report from City Clerk Dory, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. The city is scheduled to hold a general municipal election on November 8th. The election code provides that the council shall establish policies concerning the conduct of municipal elections. This can be accomplished by adoption of Resolution Number 212-72, specifying policies and requesting the general municipal election to be held on November 8th, 2022, be consolidated with the statewide general election. Further, the resolution requests the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors direct the Office of Elections to conduct the election on behalf of the city. The 222023 fiscal year budget sets aside $36,134 to pay the costs associated with this general municipal election. The city council at its May 18th, 2022, meeting placed a utility users tax measure on the November 8th ballot. The council may submit arguments in favor of the utility users tax measure. To accomplish this, the council should appoint two council members as a subcommittee to draft the primary argument in favor of the measure and any necessary rebuttal argument. Primary arguments are due July 22nd, and rebuttal arguments are due August 2nd. The language for the primary argument may be approved by the council at its July 20th regular meeting, but if a rebuttal argument is necessary, the council will have to schedule a special meeting before August 2nd to approve the language. Staff recommends the council adopt Resolution Number 212-72, calling for the general municipal election to be held November 8th, 2022, and establishing policies for that election, and consider appointing a subcommittee to draft an argument and/or rebuttal argument in favor of the utility users tax measure. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Okay, I'm guessing we're probably all on the same page about the election. That's kind of an easy one, I'm assuming. So do we have any people that would be interested in drafting the argument in favor of the utilities user tax?
Yeah, I mean, I was the only one with experience writing an argument for a measure and working on a measure. You know, I'm basically retired, so I'd be happy to volunteer. I have lots of time on my hands.
Okay, so is anyone else interested in doing that? I would be happy to take that on as well if there's anyone else.
I would also be happy to take that on as well.
Okay, so we've got three people volunteering. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for Stacy and Sarah to be on the subcommittee.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Um, oh, apologize. We do need public comment, so we'll just... Yeah, yeah, okay. So let's go ahead and do public comment, and then we will put together a beautiful motion for Bridget. Do we have anyone wishing to comment on this? All right, no one in person. How about online? We go to online?
No public comment.
Okay, let's have the motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 212-72, calling for a general municipal election to be held November 8th, 2022, and consider appointing a subcommittee of myself and Mayor Atkins Salazar to draft arguments in favor of the utilities user tax measure.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so that takes... Aye. All right, so that takes us to our last chance for oral and written communications. This time is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. If you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom, on the webinar, or press star nine. Now, if you are on the phone line and would like to make a public comment, speakers are limited to three minutes, and when it's your time for public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak. So do we have anyone in person that would like to comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, do we have any online?
No online public comment.
Okay, so that takes us to council and staff reports. So first we have, we have to receive an update from Emily Sinkorn, Director of Environmental Services, on the city of Arcata's wastewater and water infrastructure planning.
And we're happy to move forward with that. I did want to do a time check for you. There's, this is not time-sensitive unlike the election item, so it's up to you.
I'm feeling good. I can stay on.
I ought to tell you, I had a but work tomorrow morning. I mean, if it's time-sensitive or if everybody else wants to go through with it, I'm happy to go through with it.
I'm happy to table it due to the lateness of the hour.
I just don't think it's going to be a short discussion, and-
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to table this for our next, for our next council meeting?
You know, I'd like to make a motion to bring it back as a regular agenda item. I mean, it is the most important infrastructure project ever in the history of the city, so it doesn't really seem appropriate to be under staff and council reports.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem bringing it back as an agenda item, I mean, it works for me.
I'd like to make a motion to table this item until the next agenda, and thank you for sticking around, Emily. I really appreciate it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So are we bringing it back as an agenda item?
Yes, we'll bring it back as an agenda item. All right, so do we have any other staff updates or council member updates?
Oyster Fest. Airport microgrid.
Yeah, I was gonna say airport microgrid.
Good job, shots, Cal Poly, Redwood Coast Energy Authority, PG&E, what an amazing, amazing project. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to report that, you know, over the last few months, I've gathered a lot of evidence of lies and deception by the staff and the city attorney, and I think it's important for the council to discuss that. So I'd like to agendize that.
Okay, I'm not going to put that on the agenda.
Okay, so you're not bothered by the staff and city attorney lying to you?
I, I seen, I have no evidence of that.
I'm offering to present it for the public.
I'm willing to hear consideration of my colleagues if you'd like to have that on there. Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, so it's not going to go on. All right, so I do have a few report outs, and it seems anticlimactic, and hopefully, no, I mean, hopefully there's people watching or that will go back and record it, because I'll just hit a few things, but I was able to, with a couple of members of our energy committee, go to the Redwood Coast Montessori eighth grade classroom, they did their science presentations that were on climate change, and it was really cool. They also, it wasn't just climate change in general, but they specifically focused on the gateway, and they, what I was really impressed upon is they had their own ideas of things that, you know, could be done differently or whatever, and to, to help with climate change. So I gave them that feedback, that it was really great that they, you know, not only maybe disagreed or supported things, but they came back with their own ideas. So I thought that was great. I just wanted to thank APD and those who worked on helping getting the front of our safe parking site cleaned up. I know that was not easy, that's always a delicate balance in doing that, so thank you for that. Meredith plugged Oyster Fest, so that's great. We do have some press releases out regarding the community ambassador program, and that we're hiring several part-time positions, so I'm very excited about that and hoping that we get some, a lot of interest in that. And I was able to also to go to the Redwood Coast Airport microgrid ribbon cutting, and that was pretty amazing. It shows what our, there's a lot of firsts in that, first like ever in that whole project, and the theme was, is how we work together as a community to make that happen, and if we hadn't worked together, it wouldn't have. So it was just a wonderful, wonderful time of kind of celebrating, celebrating how we as Humbultans can work together and accomplish really great things and pioneer. So I appreciated that. And just sorry to end us on a bad note, but it's got to be said, we discussed this last year during Pride Month, there were some really awful behaviors that sprung up in our community, and I have since received some correspondence this month of other, just really, really awful behaviors, and so I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that there's, you know, in this town, there's no place for any type of hate or harassment, and so just want to encourage people to keep that in mind. And that's, you know, that's not, that's not who we are here in this community, so, and I know, we as a council celebrate our LGBTQIA community, and happy Pride Month.
You said earlier you were going to go over my requested agenda items.
Sure, what, what ones were you, what were you wanting to know about?
All of them.
Well, you could go ahead and go down the list.
I don't have the list in front of me. I mean, that's why I emailed it to you.
Okay, well, if you have specific ones, I'm totally happy to talk to you about it.
Um, yeah, I mean, I guess I'm disappointed that you don't know what they are. You know, what was the last one I requested? Let's see. There was the guy that was concerned about, well, first of all, the marsh.
Yeah, so for the, the marsh, City Manager Deemer did meet with one of their board members, and then we have a meeting scheduled on Tuesday evening, just to sit down with their, with their board and really have like a robust conversation that would be hard to have in this formal setting, to really figure out what their asks are and what we can do, and then we'll bring those asks to council for action on that. So it will be coming up on an agenda, but we wanted to, you know, I talked to Elliot, I emailed with Elliot, and he was, thought that was a great idea to have the conversation first before bringing it here, so that's how we're handling that one.
Okay, it'd be great if you could update me in the future what was going on. The other one was the local business owner that was concerned about DoorDash fees.
Yeah, and we, we did talk about that. So City Manager Deemer, do you want to address that?
So you're taking my agenda items, working on them, and then not telling me what the results are?
Yeah, well, no, I'm-
That's what you just described.
I'm here to report out on it, but, yeah.
On DoorDash, and I can find some specific language, I don't have it before me tonight, but in essence, when, during the early periods of COVID, when there were no other restaurant, in-restaurant operations happening, the state came in and put in some protocols that allowed cities to adopt limits to the percentages that DoorDash could charge to restaurants for delivery services. Those conditions at this point have changed, and I can email out some specific language on that that was in that, I don't have it in front of me, but that I don't think we can make those findings any longer in regards to extending that here. Those COVID conditions have changed, and restaurants have opened, and in dining, you know, restaurants now are accessible again.
So was the small business owner updated on that? Was he just in the wind?
I will, I will update on that as well, double-check on that communication.
Great, I'll tell you that.
All right, do we have anything else?
Are we going to set a date for the Planning Commission, city, is that going to be like a due to poll that goes up?
Yeah, so we just need to, we're just confirming that the city council will be rescheduling the study session with Planning Commission to discuss Gateway area plan that was scheduled for July 12th due to scheduling conflicts. So that, you know, I know that's, it's top priority for everyone, it's just also hard because it's summer and we've got a lot of people that are out of town, so, but I know both council and Planning Commission are eager to get that going, so I'm sure staff will work to find it. And it was, you know, you probably discussed this when you were talking about Gateway, but just to reiterate the importance of pretty much everyone being able to attend that meeting because it is such a big issue, so we just want to make sure that all, all three council members and all members of the Planning Commission can be there at that time, which will be challenging, but sure we can make it happen. And if there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone, thanks. We honored him at the beginning, Jim Test? Yeah, so we, we, instead of adjourning in his memory, we did it at the beginning, so people could speak. It's okay, it's been, it's been a little bit long. All right, thanks, everyone.